Testing, uh, mic? Do I get -- oh, there we go. Okay, I got a mic now. Okay, thank you. All right, welcome, everyone, to our regular city council meeting. Today's Tuesday, February 13th. Just, uh, this is a pre-celebration before Valentine's Day, just to let everybody know. And, uh, our city council meeting is located here at Veterans Hall, um, at 209 Surf Street for our viewing audience. And, um, for the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present, and we'll call the meeting into order. If we can start off, please, with a moment of silence. If we can start with that, please, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And now if you'll all join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to every republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Okay, great. Let me just put this other guy in. Okay. Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda, we don't have any recognitions tonight. Uh, our closed session report, we had no closed session, nothing to report. And next is, um, mayor and council members' reports and announcements. And I'll just start off with one briefly. I know there's been, um, I've received some email requests for, um, offshore drilling, opposition of offshore drilling specifically. And, uh, that's been, um, uh, on the 27th of February, there'll be a resolution that'll be attached to a staff report that we have for CMAK. CMAK is a California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference, which, um, the City of Morro Bay attends every year in Washington DC. And that particular staff report has a list of items, um, that will be, um, part of our purpose, uh, in going to Washington DC. And so that resolution will be presented to council and, um, adopted, have conversation, whatever that may be. But, um, uh, for information, Morro Bay does have a long history. In 97, 1997, we adopted a resolution, um, opposing offshore drilling at that time. And, um, and so, just a little history, I just want to give that update, 'cause there has been some other correspondence that's come to me and other council members, um, via email. And I just wanted to address that, so, um, as people, um, have interest in that, just wanted to address that. And the 27th will be a formal resolution that will be discussed. And that's all I have. Matt?
The one announcement I have is that this weekend, there's gonna be a big surf contest at The Rock, the Big Bad and Ugly. Um, it's gonna be, I think, well over 200 teams being represented. It should be, um, a very big event, and I think the weather's gonna be nice. It's gonna be a really nice way to see Morro Bay, um, much like the kite festival. This surf contest is, um, really enjoyable, and it's part of the community. And I think, Eric, do you remember, is it the 20, what number, how many this is for this surf contest? Well over 20?
Yeah, I think it's pushing 30, 28 or 29.
Yeah. So it's a very significant event for, um, Morro Bay, and, um, I think the surf is gonna cooperate, and, um, it'll be good for everyone to come out. There you go.
All right, are you in it, Matt?
I am not in it.
Okay, all right, just checking. Red?
The Morro Bay Friends of the Library had their used book sale last, uh, month, and they raised $3,066. I want to recognize tonight, one of our great Morro Bay citizens who helps to make that possible. That's Lori Allen. Lori works at the library in the bookroom almost every day, sorting books and CDs and DVDs that are donated. She evaluates them, puts, uh, signs a price to them, and sorts them according to subject. She also supervises setting up each of the three sales that we hold every year. This is, uh, the money that's raised is used to buy materials and, um, and fund improvements at the library, which is one of our great community gathering spots and a great resource for the city. So I want to recognize Lori Allen for the great things she does to make Morro Bay a better place to live.
All right.
I will do office hours this Saturday, uh, the 17th, at Sun 'n Buns from 9:00 until 10:00. So if you have something you want to say or ask, please come by.
All right, Red, thanks. John?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Marlaus?
Uh, yes, uh, welcome, everybody. I just have one announcement. The water reclamation facility citizens advisory committee currently has two openings. And so if you're interested in serving on that, you should submit, um, to Dana. And I believe the deadline is the 23rd of February. So I just want to remind everybody of that. That's all. Thanks.
Great announcement. Marlaus, thank you for that. And then, um, city manager reports and announcements, um, the goals retreat, just a little brief update on that.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members, Scott Collins, city manager. So the city council hosted a retreat, um, Friday, February 2nd, uh, to discuss the city goals and objectives for 2018. The retreat was facilitated by the City of Slow's Fire Chief, Garrett Olson, and he did very well, I might add. Um, it was a great discussion. Several members of the community came out. Uh, all the department heads, before you here today, and others were there in attendance to participate. Uh, the intent of the session was really to sift through the existing goals and objectives that council put in place last year, and look at new ones as appropriate, to put forward a draft work plan for city council review and approve later this month on February 27th. So staff is currently sifting through the, the output of that meeting and developing a plan of action for 2018 that considers kind of our constraints and resources. Uh, the ma- the major goals that were identified during the meeting were fiscal and economic sustainability, updating all of our guiding land use plans, the water reclamation facility and one water plan implementation, infrastructure and public spaces improvements, and, and the new goal that was added was communication and community engagement. So we will seek community input at the February 27th council meeting. Members of the community can send their ideas about what we should be pursuing to goals at morrobayca.gov. Uh, the website will also be updated early next week with, um, with our kind of formulation of what that plan could look like, so that we have plenty of time for community input prior to the meeting.
Okay, great. Scott, thanks for that. And, um, for those of us during the discussion of that retreat who might have forgotten a specific item, is that something we can bring up under future agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll maybe have that later on in the evening. Okay, thanks. And, um, with that, um, next on the agenda, we have presentations. Want to introduce, um, Pete Rogers from SlowCog. Welcome, Pete. Um, you've got some updates and presentations for us. Welcome.
Thank you. Oh, good, it is working. Uh, I'm, good evening, Mayor Irons, staff, um, members of general, general public as well. I'm Pete Rogers on SlowCog staff. I'm the deputy director there. And we're doing a roadshow on SB1 to tell everybody what it is. Most people are aware their gas taxes went up, um, in November, but it's really sort of a historic moment for transportation funding. It's difficult for this state to maintain its infrastructure, and this is really sort of a generational shift. Now, a lot of people don't know what SlowCog is, so I'll just take a moment to say that, you know, a lot of the local cities see SlowCog as a, a state agency or a federal agency, and the federal agencies see SlowCog as a real local agency. So I want the cities to really see us as an extension of local agency staff. And we're a planning and programming agency, and our members are the seven cities and the five county board supervisors. So SB1, which is the Road Repair and Accountability Act, um, was approved by the legislature in April. It will generate about $5.4 billion a year, and there are accountability measures in it. And in June, it'll be, um, constitutionally protected with a, um, here it talks about ACA 5, but it's been given a proposition number. It's Proposition 69. And what it is, is it's funding for transportation improvements. This might be hard to see, uh, but it's a, a little bit of gasoline tax increase, 12 cents per gallon, uh, so the gasoline tax goes up to 30 cents. Diesel tax increase of 20 cents, and a diesel sales tax increase. There's also a registration fee increase. There is also loan repayments. In the past, um, transportation funds went to the general fund, but now transportation funds will be protected and be strictly for transportation. The bulk of the funding, you can see by this pie chart, is coming from the gasoline tax, and it's really going to fix it first. A full, uh, half of the funding, more than half of it actually is going for, uh, pothole, pothole repair. Here's a listing of the, um, it calls it $5.52 billion here. This is a 10-year funding projection. If you look at the first two categories, local street and road maintenance and state highway improvements, you can see that just those two are, are 30 billion of the 52 billion. Um, I've highlighted the congested corridor program, of which 2.5 billion is available over 10 years. This is the, the competitive program that we're applying for, for Highway 101 in the Pismo Beach area, and also improvements on the 46th corridor. Some of the immediate impacts for our county include, uh, the Well-Sona 101 undercrossing, uh, paving and rehab throughout the county. I'm sorry for some of the acronyms here. The ITIP program is the interregional transportation program, uh, that Caltrans decides where the funds are gonna go. And we're fortunate to, um, be recommended for 197 million to fix the Y on Highway 46. In terms of the STIP program, which SlowCog has some authority to program where the projects go, uh, additional funding was just programmed for the Highway 141 roundabout project to, to help this area. There's also transit and rail funding that's dedicated to the region. There's active transportation funds for bikeways and the rideshare program. Morro Bay, when you get a complete allocation, right now you've only had a partial allocation for this year, but you'll be receiving an additional $200,000 a year. There's a number of eligible projects. It's primarily for, uh, pothole repair and maintenance. There are reporting requirements and a maintenance of effort, so that you are not allowed to shift your prior commitment to street and road, uh, on other items. So I will mention that there is a effort to repeal this gas tax increase. Um, it hasn't qualified for the ballot yet. Uh, signatures are being collected. We understand they've collected around 300,000, 400,000 signatures. They need to collect 600,000 signatures, and, um, we won't really know if it qualifies until late April or early May. And so with that, I'm available for any questions, if there are any.
All right, Pete, thanks for that. Any questions from the council? Yep, John?
Welcome, Pete, and, uh, thank you, um, being the, uh, new representative for the council to SlowCog. Um, it's great to see, um, the work that is done by SlowCog on all the issues concerning our, our, uh, not only our city, but countywide, all of the transportation issues. One quick question, maybe for the audience, in the absence of SB1 funding, should that be repealed? Where might those funds be expected to come from in the future? Your best guess?
Well, we've heard loud and clear from the legislature that if it gets repealed, there's little appetite for the state to go back and try and do a transportation fix. They put a lot of energy into it the last year and a half. As you know, uh, the county considered Measure J last year in 2016. A local sales tax measure for transportation purposes requires a two-thirds vote. Uh, we were short of the 120,000 voters, voters in the county. We were short by 400 votes to achieve that, that two-thirds vote. So in all likelihood, if it was repealed, uh, the SlowCog Board would have to consider whether or not we wanted to put another local option sales tax on the ballot in 2020, probably.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Red?
Pete, you mentioned Prop 69. Could you expand on what that is?
Prop 69 is the constitutional protection so that these funds cannot be diverted for other purposes. Um, so without that, the governor could, and the legislature could redirect transportation revenues, which have been redirected several times in the past, for other purposes, for education or prisons, so.
But to be clear, that prevents SB1's funds from?
Yes, we will, SlowCog Board will be considering a resolution to support Proposition 69 in April.
Yep. Okay, great, thanks. Anybody else? Pete, thanks very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. We have more, one more presentation, but I just want to bring, uh, to everybody's attention, speaker slips. So if, um, for public comment, if you'd like to fill out some speaker slips and bring it up to Dana, um, we'll have that, uh, for that, that point. And next, uh, for presentations, we have a presentation of Black History Month, and, um, we're delighted and proud to have our police chief, um, to introduce, um, some of our black, um, leaders in our, in and around our community, um, so we can celebrate this proclamation. If you can do that, and then, Chief, and then the council can come down to the podium and present the proclamation.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, uh, city council, staff and community. I am very honored to, uh, have you acknowledge this very important, uh, Black History Month. Uh, and so I'm going to ask to join us here, um, several people who are in the audience. First of all, Mr. Paul Williams, who is a longtime Morro Bay resident and business owner and a friend to all.
I, I would just like to thank you and the mayor for being so proactive in, uh, doing a number of things that are moving our community in the right direction in these divisive times. So, uh, I just want to give you guys a shout out.
Thank you so much. Uh, next person, uh, want to bring up someone who is very important to, uh, to our police department, Pastor Randy Ponder, who is our police chaplain. Randy, please join us. I am proud to introduce Preston Allen, who is, uh, very key member of the Slow NAACP, and Cal Poly Emeritus, recently retired. Last but not least, Dr. Joy Carter. And, um, for those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Carter and welcoming her to our community, uh, let me just say that, uh, she is, uh, Slow County's first full-time forensic pathologist. Dr. Carter is the first African-American to be appointed to chief medical examiner in the history of the United States.
Chief, thanks for that introduction. And, um, on behalf of the city and the city council, it's, um, my honor and pleasure to present and read this proclamation, um, celebrating and declaring, um, February 2018 is Black History Month. A proclamation of the city council of the City of Morro Bay, California, declaring February 2018 is Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month affords us the honor and special opportunity of recognizing and acknowledging the many significant contributions made by African-Americans in our country. And to become more knowledgeable about black heritage and to honor and celebrate the courage, sacrifice, and the many accomplishments and contributions of African-Americans and their leaders, sung and unsung, who have contributed so much to the richness and struggle for equality for all in our nation. And whereas, such knowledge enhances us as a community and underscores our commitment to respect the dignity of all, and that our strength as a community lies in our humanity. Cohesiveness and respect for diversity, inclusion, human rights, and great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for all segments of our community, and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Morro Bay designates the month of February 2018 as Black History Month, and urges our citizens to join together in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. Very well done, so, thank you.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. Thank you, Mayor, and council members and citizens. I've been given such a warm welcome here, and all I want to do is my job and help citizens live longer, healthier lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Paul, as always.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, great, thanks. All right, thanks, thanks, everybody in the audience for participating in that, and thanks for, um, celebrating Black History Month with us tonight and all of February. So, um, as we go into public comment, I'm, I've got, I'm receiving public comments, speaker slips for, um, our first public comment period is for item, for public comment for items not on the agenda. Um, if there's an item later on the agenda, you need to speak to that now, um, you could please submit it, um, and we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. But we have public comment available for every item on the agenda, including consent and our business items. And before we open up business, um, our public comment, we do open up with a business spot, and I did invite Dawn Addis, but I'm not seeing her in the audience. So, um, uh, with that, I will invite, um, our business spot up to, to be able to, um, start off our public comment. Kimberly, Kimberly Mays, if you'd please come up and, and, uh, join us and introduce yourself. Make sure you turn that microphone to you, so we can hear you, Kimberly. Thank you. Good job, Jan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kimberly Mays. I recently opened a small business in the downtown area of Morro Bay. It's called Mercantile on Main, and we are located at 863 Main Street. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. My husband and I have lived locally for the past 35 years. We raised three daughters, and now also have three wonderful grandsons. After a career of over 30 years working for the county of San Luis Obispo, I am now the proud owner of a retail business here in Morro Bay. Something I've always dreamed of. When the opportunity presented itself to purchase an existing business, and my husband and I decided to make that change and begin this new adventure, our whole family got involved with redesigning and freshening up the retail space. We officially opened on December 1st. We carry an ever-changing inventory of gifts for the whole family. We carry greeting cards, home decor, custom-made signs made on local recycled wood, and we also carry gifts made by local artisans. So I invite everyone to stop by Mercantile on Main to say hello and visit us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kimberly. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome. All right, folks, now moving on to our public comment period, I've got 10 speaker slips, so we'll start off with Charles Varney, and then, um, Mandy Davis. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Charles Varney, and I live in Oceano. I'm here tonight representing the San Luis Obispo chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. I'm the coordinator for our Stop Climate Change program. And we are visiting every one of the coastal city councils and community services districts, urging them to formally take a position, um, in opposition to the proposal of, for offshore oil and gas development. I was pleasantly surprised to hear that you're, uh, it sounds like you're ahead of our curve, and I hope that you will move forward with, um, a resolution in opposition. We, um, when our, our national research, uh, group drilled down into the metrics, um, the estimated recoverable reserves off the coast of California, um, are enough to supply the United States with all of its oil energy necessary for a whopping 18 months. The fact that there would be, um, folks in the federal government thinking that that was a fair trade-off to the huge risks that it would put our coast at is pretty inconceivable. You are already joined with, by your fellow, uh, beach communities of Grover Beach and Pismo Beach in opposition to this. Surf Rider has been on record against offshore oil and gas development for years. The fact that we all know that we are in a time in the history of civilization and our species where the notion of dumping billions of more tons of CO2 in the atmosphere borders on the ridiculous, um, and that folks like you all will be standing up against that is, um, is a comfort to all of us. So thank you very much. I have a couple of, uh, pieces of information here for you, the resolution by the State Lands Commission in opposition, and a draft resolution that may be a resource you could use.
Thanks, Charles. That'd be great. Mandy Davis, and then, um, Alish McNutty? I, hopefully I didn't, I, okay, thank you.
Hello, once again. How are you guys tonight? I'm Mandy Davis, and I live here in Morro Bay, and I am representing the Coast Alliance on the offshore drilling issue. Um, some of you may remember six years ago, when the Coast Alliance was formed, as a matter of fact, the City of Morro Bay was a supporter, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, the Fisherman's Association, hundreds of individuals, and people all up and down the coast and into Hawaii. So we were, um, we were opposing the seismic testing, and obviously, historically, you can tell, that whole issue was resolved, the testing didn't happen. So why is the Coast Alliance, um, so opposed to offshore drilling? Well, inherent within offshore drilling permitting and the whole process, the very first thing those guys are gonna do is hu-
So, what I would like to ask you to do though, within that resolution that you're going to draft, and I'm sure all of you will unanimously uphold it, is that there would be very strong wording in there to make sure that that pre-drilling seismic testing does not even come before the CCC or the State Lands Commission, that it is not anything that would even be considered. That's a huge part of it and it's a back door that we want to slam shut fast. Okay? Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mandy. Alish McNutty, thank you, welcome. And then Rigmore.
So, my name is Alish McNulty, but McNutty was close.
Okay.
I am.
Thanks for being so patient.
No problem. Happens all the time. I'm here to represent both the nonprofit organization EcoSlow as well as students of Cal Poly, just to say, we've seen the impacts that oil spills can cause to both coastal communities, the wildlife there, and coastal economies. And we don't want to see that happen here in San Luis Obispo County. So, I would also like to respectfully request that you guys publicly oppose the new five-year outer continental shelf plan.
Thank you. Thanks. Rigmore. And then Carolyn Brinkman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rigmore, resident of Morro Bay. I understand you have had your ears full regarding commercial building heights over 30 feet. I tried to give my two cents at the planning commission but was stopped since it was the wrong time slot for building heights. I tried to sneak in, but anyway. The staff seems to think that the commercial on first floor and residential on second floor needs more than 30 feet to be viable. But, I think we have several already commercial buildings that work just fine for the type of retail and living we get here in Morro Bay. Look at 600 Morro Bay Boulevard, pharmacy first floor, living second floor, 30 feet tall. The Sun Bolton Building, retail first, possible living second floor and 30 feet tall. Anything taller than that will irritate someone, take away sunshine, light, and views. If 30 feet means flat roofs, well, that's okay. And since I will not stay, I have some opinion on storage for boats and trailers in the Triangle Lot next to our Maritime Museum, Oceans and Embarcadero. You have already messed up close to there at the bluff side where the Surf Street stairs come down, dumpsters for restaurants, storage, and work going on. This is all an eyesore on our beautiful coast, close to oceans, restaurants, visitors, and million-dollar houses on the bluff there. We already know how easily mission creep starts in Morro Bay. And I can see, before we know it, people will be repairing, painting, and scraping on their boats and trailers and generator noise, fumes, dust, and other noise will infiltrate. You give the little finger and soon goes the whole hand and it is never easy to row your boat back. Thank you.
Thanks, Rigmore. Carolyn Brinkman. And then Judy Brown.
Good evening, Mayor Irons, council members, staff. My name is Carolyn Brinkman and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. It was very heartening to open up the agenda and see that the minutes from the last City Council meeting were included. That has not been the case in the past and so we thank you for that. It was good to see them there. And thanks to all of you who made that possible. You listened to all of the members of the Morro Bay Action Team, the community members who got up and asked for more timely publication of minutes and we noticed and we thank you. We also noticed that underneath each agenda item was a link. And that link, we found very helpful. It goes to the portion of the video that covers the council proceedings. And so, it's very easy then to, if you want to see the discussion that occurred relative to a particular agenda item, you don't have to go through the whole, the whole video to find that. And that is extremely helpful. So, again, we thank you for listening to us and have a good evening.
Thanks, Carolyn. Jenny Brown. And then Dawn Beatty.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Judy Brown. I live on Alessandro Street. And I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but we had a certain incident happen that compels me to do so. I am here to support our chief and our entire police department. And I'd like to tell you that as a 35-year resident, I've worked with many changes of the guard over the decades. And our current group of folks have been the most responsive, sensitive, accessible, and effective that I have seen to date. We have a real problem or had a real problem on Alessandro Street for a variety of reasons that I won't get into at the moment, but let me just say it this way. The chief and his staff were very accessible in helping us with this problem and from what I can tell for the last month, they've solved it. This is something that no former police chief was able to do. This is a bad part of town. The chief did it for us and he was, he did it immediately. The minute we said there was a problem, he was right on it. I would also like to say, I admire everyone in the entire department and I would trust my life and have indeed trusted my life to anyone on our police department and especially to our chief, Gregory Allen. So, thank you Chief Allen. Thank you, Jody. Thank you to the MBPD for all you do for our town and may you continue on. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Judy. Thanks for your comment and support. Dawn. Welcome, Dawn. And then Erin Oakes.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. My name is Dawn Beatty and I live in Morro Bay. I'd like to comment on all the good information our citizens have been contributing to the issues our council and staff have been dealing with. I am concerned, though, that many of these contributions come not as help to the council and staff, but more as they look what you missed. Instead of appearing to work hand-in-hand, it appears like an attack. How lucky we all are to have citizens who pay attention to many of the details associated with city issues. What would be great to see is a more cooperative attitude given with each of these contributions. Lots of eyes and ears working together is a good thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Appreciate it. Erin Oakes. And then Pam Oakes. Come on up. Erin, thanks.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. My name is Erin Oakes and I'm a Morro Bay resident. My comments tonight, I'm speaking as a resident and not as a columnist or a writer. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Chief Allen for his due diligence and his resolve and his courage. We had an incident that was earlier, I think it was earlier last week, that he had been addressing and there is a lot of acrimony going on by citizens that live outside of Morro Bay and I've seen a lot of hostility being directed toward him. And I just want to let Chief Allen know that the community of Morro Bay stands behind you in every step of the way. And sometimes we make mistakes and we can learn from them. I think that Chief Allen has done a remarkable job in addressing the community on a lot of these issues. I have full faith and confidence in the Morro Bay Police Department and all of its staff as well as emergency services, including the fire department. You guys have been terrific and I hope you keep doing a wonderful job for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Pam. Pam Oakes. And then Betty Winholz.
Good evening. I'm Pam Oakes with Save Our Seniors in Morro Bay. Most people in town have no idea what's going to hit them with bills reflecting $167 million wastewater project for a population of a little over 10,000. That's insane. Our seniors may not use computers or even have cable to be able to watch these meetings. Most people are too busy with their lives and have their own problems to be paying attention. $167 million is quite a high price tag for fear of a tsunami or flooding. This has not occurred at the plant in its 60-plus years. Mayor Irons, isn't that why you wanted the Coastal Commission to deny the permit for our current plant rather than updating it? Engineers can do anything. They can lift it, they can build walls around it. So, residents are just now becoming aware of what a bad decision you made and how you're running, kind of ramming this thing through at this point, it's a bad project before you leave office this year. People on fixed incomes shouldn't be forced out of town or have to choose between a sewer bill and food or medicine. That's shameful. They want to know where they can go. Your project makes the Los Osos project look like a great deal. Their plant cost 48 million. Ours, according to the Tribune and some paperwork, 167 million. Our price tag is more than Los Osos' entire project. They not only built a plant, but they dug up every single street and laid pipes and Something is suspicious here. Simply, you can't build a project people can't afford. There's improper compliance with a variety of regulatory requirements, including oversight by various state agencies and compliance with regulations regarding environmental justice and the like. You've had no affordability study or economic impact report. This price tag for a sewer would devastate local businesses. The loans from EPA and the state revolving fund have a 2% to 4% median household income and we're not Malibu.
Pam, the time has gone off.
Okay. One last thing. I don't know how the council could walk down the street when causing so much stress and harm to their friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Betty Winholz. And then Jeff Echols.
Good evening. I'm Betty Winholz. I would like to address item C2 because I will not be here for the rest of the meeting. And I did send the council my comments, but I'd like to report them out loud and hopefully you will respond to those later. This is the item that has to do with boat and RV storage down at the Triangle parking area that's part of the energy plant. And you in the staff report have listed about nine items and I would just like to respond to those nine items. The first one has to do with rates and the staff report rightly says that the city should not be in competition with private businesses. And I hope that you will make sure that those rates, that if you go forward with this project, that you will make sure that they are markedly higher than public businesses so you're not competing with them. Obviously, security is going to be very important. My concern about security is actually one that Rigmore mentioned earlier and that is how that's going to look, if you're going to put up a chain-link fence, if you're going to have bright lights. How are you going to keep that from becoming a distraction on the, on our busiest street in town, the Embarcadero? Lighting was addressed as not going to be interfering with neighbors, but I would like to remind you also it should not interfere with night lights, therefore light pollution. And that was one of the Coastal Commission's concerns when they, we put the boardwalk in out to the rock, that those lamps were put in that they were dim enough not to distract. And I would hope you would carry that over to this area. First-come, first-served basis is fine and of course harbor department should manage it. The part about revenues, however, anything that happens on that area belongs in the harbor fund. It would not only be inappropriate, but I believe illegal that you should move any of that money that you might take in as revenue, go to the general fund. It should all stay with the harbor fund. My biggest concern and what I strongly object to is that you would even think to allow RV storage down there. When you talk about the word temporary, temporary could mean 10 years, it could mean 15 years. You know, if you go in and get braces, they say, oh, your teeth are going to have braces for two years, that's temporary. Or, you know, 10 years. There's no project for this area. And if you start with a storage area, I can't believe that you won't continue with it. According to Measure D, probably not boats outside of fishing boats should be there. But you could stretch that. It's a marine-related area, but I don't see how you can even condone putting RVs down there. And certainly the priority should be to Morro Bay residents. Was not clear in your staff report, what do you do with someone who owns a home here but is not a resident? How do they fit into that priority list? And I do want to reiterate that the priority is the benefit for a resident and that they should not get a financial discount. Again, some other suggestions that came from your harbor ward were about subleasing. My concern about that would be whether someone would get up several spaces and then become a middleman to sell those out to others. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Jeff Echols. And then Chuck Stoll.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of Morro Bay, also a business owner here in Morro Bay. I own the Morro Bay House of Jerky. It's a successful
It should all stay with the Harbor Fund. My biggest concern, and what I strongly object to, is that you would even think to allow RV storage down there. When you talk about the word temporary, temporary could mean 10 years, it could mean 15 years. You know, if you go in and get braces, they say, "Oh, your teeth are going to have braces for two years. That's temporary." Or, you know, 10 years. There's no project for this area. And if you start with a storage area, I can't believe that you won't continue with it. According to Measure D, probably not boats outside of fishing boats should be there. But you could stretch that. It's a marine-related area, but I don't see how you can even condone putting RVs down there. And certainly, the priority should be to Morro Bay residents. Was not clear in your staff report, what do you do with someone who owns a home here but is not a resident? How do they fit into that priority list? And I do want to reiterate that the priority is the benefit for a resident and that they should not get a financial discount. Again, some other suggestions that came from your Harbor Ward were about subleasing. My concern about that would be whether someone would get up several spaces and then become a middleman to sell those out to others. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Jeff Echols. And then Chuck Stoll.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a resident of Morro Bay, also a business owner here in Morro Bay. I own the Morro Bay House of Jerky. It's a successful business down on the waterfront, and it's been there for over eight years now. So it's good to be back. I saw the woman introduce her new business here tonight, and I remember doing that eight and a half years ago. Some of my buddies made bets saying, "Echols, you're nuts. You're opening up a jerky shop on the waterfront? We've got bets on how long it'll last." Well, I'm happy to say that it's lasted. I'm also a candidate for the county supervisor's seat for the second district, which is our district here. I'm here tonight, however, to speak to you about adopting a resolution against offshore oil drilling and exploration, as some other speakers have done as well. Now, I was coming up from Southern California after the holidays. We visited some family down there, and I've got two 14-year-olds that attend Los Sosos Middle School. They'll be in high school later this year. They're twins. And my daughter said to me when we got back into Morro Bay, she says, "Dad, it's so good to be back. I'm glad that we're back." I said, "Well, honey, did you not have a very good time?" She said, "No, I had a good time visiting family and everything. It's just that we live in such a beautiful place. I love it here." And I said, "Yes, we are. We do." We are entrusted to such a special environment here, and our natural resources, protecting those natural resources must be one of our chief assignments. In particular, our marine resources and ocean resources. So I urge you to please be proactive on this issue, and it's also timely because the federal agency is taking comments, and they're closing those comments down in a rather short time period. So I urge you to be proactive on this issue and adopt a resolution at your earliest possible point in time opposing offshore drilling and exploration. I think it would be great if we joined the other cities that have done this. I believe the Board of Supervisors missed an opportunity to do this. Hopefully, they'll come around, but I would love to see Morro Bay put that resolution forth. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Chuck Stoll.
Thank you, Mayor Jamie, and rest of your council. I just want to, on a lighthearted, not quite so deep, is our fundraiser coming up, and I just wanted to announce it. Unfortunately, we don't have our TV, so it's called Rock the Shamrock, and it's a fundraiser, Tunes and Noodles, that the Lions annually bring forward. It will benefit all the elementary schools, well, two at least, Los Sosos Middle School and our Delmar School. We have a lot of involvement by the PTAs from both schools. It will be held right here. We will not exceed the number of people that are supposed to be here, so Chief Knuckles doesn't have to worry about that part, nor Chief Allen. But it's going to be a great, great evening, obviously, on St. Patrick's Day, and that's March 17th, for those who forgot. That stage is going to be reset, and we're going to have Vernon James and the Funky Flames performing, so we're hoping that everybody can attend. Should be a lot of fun. We're trying to emphasize that the proceeds, and that proceeds will go towards the fine arts programs for these two schools. As you're well aware, when budget cuts hit schools, they generally hit the fine arts, the music and the, you know, the drama and the bands and so on. So we want to help those programs out as much as we can. And then I want to follow up with what Mr. Nichols was just commenting about, about our environment. There are two organizations, both of which you might want to keep track of. One is Protect Slow County. I don't know if you are familiar with this, but it's an organization that is forming within the county of San Luis Obispo, and its initiative, which we hope will be on the ballot, requires at least 13,000 signatures from our county. And what they want to do is protect our water and our air and our environment. There's quite a bit of oil drilling, as you're probably well aware, in Price Canyon. We want to prevent future fracking. Not that any fracking is occurring now, but we want to prevent that from happening simply because it's going to greatly affect the water, and we know how precious that is. And the other organization is one called CCL, Citizens Climate Lobby, which is also directed, and it's an international organization, and it's directed also to improve, actually it's a solution, we think, to the production of more CO2s. So keep your eyes open, and I think you're going to appreciate these two organizations. And I do hear your buzzer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. That concludes all the speaker slips that I have tonight for public comment. As I peruse the audience to see if there's anybody else out there, seeing none, thanks. I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks for all the supportive comments for our police and the comments regarding offshore oil drilling, which will be coming forward. And were there any other items, council, that we needed to look at in response? I don't think so. WRF, what's that? Go ahead.
The comment that I believe Mrs. Oaks had with regard to what she cited was the cost, determined cost of 168 million, maybe Mr. Leibig could address that and, or clear update as to the reality of that.
Thank you, Councilman Heading, council. The current estimated price for the project is 150 million, includes 25% of contingencies is included in that cost. We currently have a request for proposal out for bids for the construction of the heart of the facility, the main water reclamation facility site. That portion of the project is estimated about $89 million without contingency. So that's costs we'll be looking at. We'll be bringing that forward. Those bids are due the 24th of April. That'll be followed with an assessment of, once we get the bids in, what our rates could support, and if we need to go out for a Prop 218 process.
Thank you. Thanks, John. I think we got it. Just real quickly, I know we'll get to Item C2, but Eric, Measure D, could you clarify the zone itself is Beach Street north of Coleman, but it's west of the Embarcadero? The Triangle parking lot is not in the Measure D zone?
Correct, Mayor. The Triangle lot would not be in the Measure D zone. Measure D is from Beach Street to Target Rock, but it only specifically addresses leases subject to state titans, which the Triangle lot is not. Triangle lot is fee simple on property in Baton City.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Was there anything else? Matt?
Jamie, could now be, in terms of when we talk about the offshore drilling and what Morro Bay has done in the past, in terms of resolutions, not citing what we may do in the future, but could we, do we have a date firm on when Morro Bay has dealt with this issue in the past?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I guess, Morro Bay has city council passed a resolution in the past against offshore drilling.
Yeah, we do have an offshore, we do have a, currently have a resolution that's in place that was adopted in 1997, and so that stands. The proposal would be to bring back a resolution that would both identify that and address the current concerns and needs to protect the waters in our area.
Okay, so that could be placed on, something like that could be placed on future agenda items?
Well, that'll, that's going to be coming back on the next city council agenda on the 27th as part of the CMAC agenda, as I discussed earlier.
No, no, you did. I just want to make sure that it's clear in terms of the timeline, and then also just note that we have, Morro Bay has passed this resolution in the past, and that anything we do have coming up in terms, concerns of CMAC would be in addition to this.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Red?
Yeah, I would like to respond to a public comment that we received via email from Nancy Bast regarding the chairs. Am I allowed to do that?
You know, if you want to make, I guess if you want to make a comment to that, but I think, I see our attorney looking towards us at that. It might be a future agenda item, but...
You may want to wait until the end when you make comments about things not on the agenda or in public comment.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Trying to stick to the formalities here and procedures, which is good. Thanks. And with that, that concludes public comment and any clarification of comments that were made during that time. Moving on to consent agenda, I don't have any speaker slips for consent, and I'm looking out in the audience. None? Okay, so opening up for public comment for consent, seeing none. I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. And with that, are there any items to pull on consent or a motion to approve items on consent?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, second by Ms. McPherson, to approve all consent items. Any discussion? None, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Great job. Next item. Yeah, 703. Yeah, 703. Okay. Next item, C1 is the first business item we have tonight. This is a request for direction regarding Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant Closure Settlement Agreement and Budget Appropriations for Legal Costs and Community Impact Mitigation. Scott?
Yes. Good evening. Scott Collins, city manager, and just going to give an update on the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant closure. It's been some time since city council has received an update, and there's been a lot going on with regard to this closure that's going to have a tremendous impact to the Slow region. So the recommendation before you this evening is to consider directing the city manager to bring forward a budget amendment, an amount of $15,000 or thereabouts, to reimburse the city of San Luis Obispo for the legal expenses they assumed related to the settlement agreement for the closure. And then also consider financial support for the economic study and economic strategy development in the wake of the closure of Diablo, scheduled for 2024 and 2025. So just going to go over briefly the history of the closure, what's coming, talk about the economic study as well as strategy development, quickly go over the CPUC decision and the impacts of that decision, talk about the contingency plan in the wake of that decision, and then ultimately the recommendations for council tonight. So the Diablo closure is scheduled for 2024, 2025, and that was approved by the CPUC. First reactor will close, or be closed in 2024, and then the other on 2025. The impetus for this closure is really twofold. One is that there's greener energy available, and there's safer energy available in the state and outside of the state to supplant that energy supply to residents of California and beyond. This would be the last nuclear power plant on the coast in California. Once it's closed, there will be no other. The economic impact of the closure has been well stated. The anticipated impact, that is, will be substantial. We're talking upwards of 1,500 PG&E jobs that will be lost. Those jobs are extremely well-paid, on average about $157,000 annually, and there'll be 1,000 supporting jobs lost in the wake of that closure, and ultimately a $1 billion annual regional economic loss. That is staggering, and just beginning to understand what the ripple effects of that closure will be. Though, in addition to that, there'll be revenue loss for cities and county, and the school districts taking a significant impact of $8 to $10 million of immediate lost revenue when the plant is closed. So understanding that this was coming, the Coalition of Cities, which includes six out of the seven cities in the county, and then all seven have now joined, Slow County, the school district, PG&E, Chambers, Economic Vitality Corporation, and others have come to the table to negotiate a settlement agreement to really help address the impacts and mitigate the impacts. The first would provide training to those PG&E employees affected by the closure, and then the $85 million community impact mitigation program that really recognizes the impact and to really kind of brace for that and have a softer landing with the closure, and then really begin to plan for what we're going to do in the wake of that $1 billion loss. So of that $85 million, $10 million would be set aside to form an economic development fund for cities in the county, with an immediate $400,000 set aside for immediate planning for that loss. In addition, Senate Bill 968 was passed prior to all this happening and called the Mottin' Study, that really was set aside to help analyze the impacts of the closure and work together with the $400,000 set aside to create not only funding for the study but also development of a strategy. The strategy and study have been led by the Economic Vitality Corporation, and their purpose really here is to engage consultants to review the impacts and develop, in collaboration with community stakeholders, which include all the cities in the county, the school districts, the chamber boards, businesses, et cetera, to develop a regional economic study and plan of action. The main tool, this would be the main tool for the region in defining a roadmap to evolve from the loss of this economic driver for the community, and it's a critical regional partnership. You know, every meeting I have with my colleagues in other cities, this is beyond the calpers, this is the other main point of conversation, just really trying to imagine how we're going to deal with the loss and really redefine ourselves as a region. This was intended to be funded through the CIMP, as I mentioned, and Senate Bill 968. The expected cost of developing the analysis and the analysis informing that strategy in the neighborhood of $800,000, and EVC has been instrumental in creating a really good process to review potential consultants and come away with a consultant team that's head and shoulders above those who also applied, and really good game plan for us to get down to the granular level to understand what the impacts will be in Morro Bay, Royal Grande, Slow, et cetera, but also the regional level, and develop strategies that address kind of the various needs of each of those areas. The Coalition of Cities was created to form a framework to address this and other issues like the legal expenses, and also developed a contingency plan should the CPUC provide an unfavorable ruling, which they did. The settlement agreement was rejected by the CPUC in January 2018. As it relates to cities in the county, the CIMP was denied. The commission, following its legal advice from its counselors, determined that the commission lacks the legal authority to approve ratepayer funding of the mitigation funds. They didn't see a nexus and therefore rejected the settlement agreement. So at this point, the CIMP is not funded, yet we know the economic impact is coming regardless, and planning needs to begin soon. In addition, legal fees were assessed to date, need to be reimbursed by the cities, to the city of Slow, who did a tremendous job representing our interests, the community's interests at the table, and ultimately were denied, but there's no lack of effort and creative thinking and really getting in front of this, but we weren't successful, and we need to deal with that. So the contingency plan for the Coalition of Cities outlined a schedule that equitably shared the legal expenses amongst the cities and the county, and it also outlined how the city and counties and our partners could move forward in funding the economic study and strategy, which now, with the inclusion of Santa Maria in the mix, it's now upwards of $1 million to fund. The city of Morro Bay's share in that would be approximately $25,000 to $40,000, probably more towards the $25,000 level. We're in talks as city managers amongst the various cities to come up with an equitable share and distribution of that, those costs, and also work with our partners to see who else can come to the table to, because this is impacting virtually every sector of the community. So our partners are working with Senator Mottin' and others to address the funding issue on the legislative front. There's already a spot bill that's been identified, though the number has not been assigned. So there, Senator Mottin' has voiced, this is his top priority for this year. Now whether San Francisco and LA and San Diego area legislatures will care isn't anybody's guess, but they're going to work really hard to push forward for the Slow regions. guess, but they're going to work really hard to push forward for the Slow region's interest here. There'll be more updates to come as we learn about the spot bill and as it moves forward through the process. So the recommendations again are to direct staff to bring forward the $15,000 appropriations for legal fees in the fiscal year 1718 mid-year budget process. This would be a risk fund, fund balance allocation. And then have a discussion about financial support, the City of Morro Bay, to fund the CIMP, at least the first couple phases, in partnership with every city in the county, the county, EVC, and other partners to ensure that we have a successful roadmap to re-envision what we're going to be once we lose the Diablo Power Plant. So that concludes my remarks and happy to entertain any questions at council man.
Okay, great. Scott, thanks for that. I don't have any speaker slips for this item, so I just want to remember, folks, in case there were people that wanted to speak to this, but I will open it for public comment just in case as well. And then I'll look for, so for questions, we'll start off with questions and then...
Just wanted to introduce, Michael Manchuck is here, the President and CEO of the Economic Vitality Corporation. So he may have a few comments to make, but I'd probably wait to hear from council first.
Okay, great. Thanks for coming, Mike. So we'll go with questions and then we'll open for public comment and then come back for discussion. So Red, do you want to start us off on questions? No? Matt?
Yes, Scott, in terms of the allocation of $15,000 in the mid-year, would we just, in terms of making up that balance, would we be doing that on every next six months throughout the various, going forward?
The $15,000 would just be one time. We don't anticipate any future legal costs with related to the closure. If there were any, we'd certainly alert council as soon as possible of that effect, but we don't anticipate any more. So this would just be a one-time draw from the fund balance.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks. John?
No questions, thank you.
Marla?
Yeah, just to clarify, so the 15, it's up to $15,000? You don't have an exact number?
It would be, I've heard, I've talked to the City Manager Derek at Slow, and he says $15,000, so maybe $100 or $200 more or less.
Right, but that's for past legal expenses?
That's correct, yeah.
Correct.
That's the end of it.
And so what you're also asking us for is, would we approve additional funding for a study that, has it been designed?
I'll have Mike Manchuck kind of talk about the process and where we are in that, but ultimately what that's geared to do is both the study and the strategy development. And there were already some formally, there was already some thoughts going into that process, but we were waiting to see what the outcome of the CPUC decision was before moving forward.
Right. So you said this, the coalition is of the City Managers. Have any other city councils been weighed in on this issue yet?
No, we're the first, and we anticipate all the cities will kind of take this up either at the next meeting or maybe the first meeting in March. So we wanted to give you an update because it's been a while and just get a sense of the level of support, but our, yes, all the cities are part of the coalition, but City Managers can't bind their councils on funding decisions without first having that discussion in public.
So we're going to be the first to weigh in?
Right, right. But I would say the general, strong general consensus amongst the City Managers is that this is a very important first step in kind of reassessing where we're going to move forward to and also funding an important strategy.
If I could just add, your current City Manager wasn't here. This discussion had been going on for quite a while with...
Thanks, Joe.
And there are, there were, and actually some of the council that's here now wasn't on the council at the time. And because it was involving litigation, we had several closed sessions where there was discussions. All the councils of all the cities agreed to this framework. So it's just, now we're dotting the i's to actually get the money to pay for the framework that everyone agreed to.
Yeah, I understand the backward part. It's the forward part, additional monies which would come, I take it out of the next fiscal year's budget?
Really good question. I mean, I think we're, we want to move forward as quickly as possible, but we also realize that every City Council has to go through the same process and then ultimately looking to our partners on the private side to help put forward funds to make this happen.
So the amount that you're trying to raise across all of the partners is roughly $800,000?
We're looking at $1 million in total. It was around $800,000 we anticipated, but the City of Santa Maria would now be part of that, and their population base is much, much more than most of the cities. So their take would kind of cover that difference. The other piece is that the Senate Bill 968, we anticipated that that would provide more of the analysis. It turns out that's more of a flyover analysis, not the granular level that we really need to develop a meaningful strategy. So that will help inform it to a certain extent, but we really will be doing all of that in one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. I might be repeating some of the questions, but just to be clear, based on the recommendation we have tonight is to appropriate the amount of $15,000 and then also consider financial support for an unknown quantity which would come back to council at a future date. So basically, if we support that, we're ready to discuss what that future amount would be, and that future amount we're estimating right now around 26-ish right there, so that's what we'd expect and it would come back to us. I guess the other question for, from fiscal impacts, coming from the Risk Management Fund, you know, our policy that manages our Risk Management Fund, we are obligated to maintain a $50,000 minimum balance in that, but it is a Risk Management Fund, and you know, so obviously if we needed to go into that for emergencies, that's what it's there for. But could we talk about what the current balance is for the Risk Management Fund? Sorry, Jen, I didn't cover that earlier today, it just came to me, so otherwise I would have probably had that question asked for you earlier.
That's okay, as long as you don't want it to the penny.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I recall reading that the policy is to maintain $100,000 balance in the fund, and I think we're around $400,000 off the top of my head. I remember seeing 380 somewhere, but I think it's about four.
Okay. That's great, thanks. Thanks for clarifying that, got the details down. We didn't get down to the pennies, but we did get down to some of the details, thanks. That's only the questions I have. Red?
The $15,000 to reimburse Slow, I see was going to come from the Risk Management Fund. Is that also the case for the CIMP?
We anticipate the CIMP would be a general fund allocation, and depending on the direction we receive tonight, we'll explore all options to mitigate any impacts and look at, there's other funds we can draw from or existing projects that may have been funded that are economic development related to help soften the blow for the general fund.
Would it be legal to draw from the Risk Management Fund to fund the CIMP?
Certainly not for the entire amount. Maybe we may make some argument that there's some connection to the potential litigation, but I feel totally comfortable with the $15,000 going out of the Risk Fund. I have a little, a lot less comfort using the Risk Fund for the study.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to be clarified, clarifying the Risk Fund as we've gone through that, getting in a little of the details. As we balance out our year-end budget, the accumulation portion of that Risk Management Fund is general fund at that point. So at the end of the year, if we have $400,000 in our, $500,000 in our Risk Management Fund, we maintain 100 of that as policy, the $400,000 would be into our general fund at year-end. That's the practice that we've gone through.
That's true, but then it wouldn't be Risk Fund that you're using, it'd be the general fund.
Correct. I just want to make sure that that's kind of how intertransfers would, if that's the appropriate way of saying it, would take place. And I see Jen making some clarifications for me here, thanks.
So you set up a Risk Management Fund to kind of accumulate this money to pay for any future legal obligations that you might have in our insurance. The council has set the policy that they'll maintain the minimum funding level of 100,000, so at any point you could choose to use money in that fund to transfer to any other fund to pay for something, as long as you stay within that 100,000 threshold, or you could choose to lower it. From a staff perspective, $100,000 feels quite low, so I would not encourage that, but that's the choice of the council.
Great, thanks.
Wonderful.
Okay, all right, yeah.
And it's good clarification, thank you for that. If I recall correctly, it doesn't, anything over 100,000 doesn't automatically go into the general fund at the end of the year. That's subject to council approval in terms of what is moved from a transactional standpoint. And if I recall also correctly, some of those funds, council, at least a majority of council, used to offset the first year's calpers, part of the first year's calpers fund issue or shortfall. You may not have that history, Jen, but I do believe that was correct, that about 200,000 of that fund was recommended for offsetting the 600,000 impact for year one on the Calperry shortfall, if I recall that correctly.
There's a note in the adopted budget that says, I think in 1516, just about $900,000 was transferred out for, I think, a variety of different things, and hers was part of that.
Thanks.
Okay, great. All right, got some clarification on that. And with that, like I said, I don't have any speaker slips, but I would invite Mr. Manchuck up to help us out from the EVC Board, that'd be great, thanks and welcome. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Irons and the council. I've been working with Scott Collins on this matter. He asked me to come and give a brief update, take just a few minutes. Some of this information, most of which has been covered already, but I will take any questions and just give a little bit of a recap and go just a bit deeper on what it is that we're doing as an organization. EVC is a nonprofit organization. We are the economic development organization that serves all of San Luis Obispo County and have since 1994. It is a public-private partnership, so it's supported by both the private sector, businesses primarily, and also each of the seven cities and the county itself. We have a board of 41, two of which thank you for your service on the EVC Board, represents 41 people that represent every industry sector, including elected officials from each of the cities and two county supervisors. So let's go back to, if I could, Scott's presentation. So back in June of 2016, when the announcement was made by PG&E, the day after we announced that we would step up as an organization that has also managed a county-wide economic strategy for the last six, seven years, and that this was an obvious place that we should step into and support and manage what ultimately comes down to two things. If we are looking at a $1 billion loss, which we are roughly, to give you a sense of scale, that would be the equivalent of losing any one particular industry, whether it's, that are valued at about a billion dollars a year. So that could be the wine industry, the tourism industry, or Cal Poly for that matter. Each one of those three represents about a billion dollars per year in the county's economy. So this matter is the equivalent of takeout, removing one of those from our county's economy. So in other words, no more tourism starting 2024. So that gives you the scale of magnitude. So as a project manager on this, we have, since this, we've done this, since the instant of the announcement actually, we've developed governance structure, we have a board, but we also have a separate governance structure around this. We have led an effort to do a nationwide RFP to find consultants that would ultimately do two things. They would develop an economic impact of this situation, and I'll talk about the Munning Study in a moment, which would complement it. And then ultimately, the second phase of two phases would be the strategy around, how do you replace a billion dollars or thereabouts from your county's economy? The third or phase, if there is such a phase, would be the implementation of that strategy. So the, let's, if I could shift to the Munning Study, as Scott pointed out, a study that was actually envisioned before Diablo was announced, actually. So that study, 968, which became law, is actually studying not only Diablo Canyon but also San Onofre, and San Onofre, as you know, has closed. It is costing about $400,000 and is paid for by PG&E itself. The consultant search ultimately, if I can go back to that, ultimately found a firm that everyone on this committee of about 25 people decided absolutely the best fit for us, as Scott has pointed out as well. As for the joint proposal, the EVC, just a couple of clarifications, the EVC was not a part of the crafting of that document, although we worked very closely and continue to with the cities and the county and those that support it. Also, another clarification, the Munning Study being done currently by UC Berkeley, that work actually just started or is about to start this coming week. There is no strategy included in that. It is strictly a very high-level analysis of the economic impacts of the closure of Diablo. We, on the other hand, have felt, we, the EVC, and every supporter we have, including the consultants that we're, have not hired but are working with, and in addition to all the organizations around the nation that are facing a similar type of closure. So we're working with communities around the nation that have also had a nuclear plant that has either closed or will close. And each of them have stated that we need a very granular study. We need to look all the way down to the city level as to what the impacts will be, and not just a brief flyover. In 2013, PG&E commissioned their own study by Cal Poly, as you may know, and that was a very high-level study. We want to get much deeper than that, if we're going to develop really meaningful strategies around that. Lastly, on this, the, if we can talk a little bit, just a moment, about the legislative option or the alternative. So we met with Bill Munning, Senator Munning, on Friday, they're proceeding, he's authored the bill, Assemblyman Cunningham will co-author the bill, and they're going to go before and by the end of this year, they should have an idea as to whether or not this is feasible to get it passed. There's many people that tell me that it's, the probability is fairly low, because there's so many people in the elected office in Sacramento that would have to agree with it, and they say that's not likely. So we'll cross our fingers, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Lastly, if I could, two items. One is the fundraising. So we are currently discussing with the cities and the counties, the amount of money that it's going to require to do this work. We believe that, as does the group of steering committee members, that this should really be an effort that is funded not only by government, but also the private sector, so it's an all-in type of arrangement, we think. And this is the arrangement for which we're going to try to pursue, which is, everyone's contributing to this. The magnitude of this problem is such that it will impact everyone once it happens. And so everyone should have a piece of not just helping to support and help pay for, but also to help build a strategy. That's going to be a very important part of this project. For anyone that was, and lastly here, for anyone that wants an update, on the EVC website, there is a document that we constantly update. That's it, so our website is sloevc.org for the Economic Vitality Corporation, and if you just put slash Diablo, you'll go right to that document that you can actually download as a PDF as well. And that is the updates to the process. So with that, I'll stop, I think I went over a little, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and actually come back at any time and continue to give updates.
Thanks, Mike, and thanks for making sure you're part of our presentation tonight and this information. Any questions from council? Marla?
I just have one question. So the study that you're envisioning, would UC Berkeley also do that study, or would this be a separate study that you would start all over again and look for somebody to do?
So that's a fantastic question. So UC Berkeley, as I indicated, is going to do what will be considered by most to be a fairly high-level flyover, if you will. We envision something much deeper. We are going to work with them very, very closely to make sure that either they can do what we need, which is a much more granular study, or we're going to have to figure out how we do that, how we accomplish that. So we hope to not replicate anything, we hope to not duplicate any effort, but really leverage the same resources to get the same result. So our idea is not to just go do more work, but actually just to get them to do it and everyone will benefit.
And the timing of this? And the timing of this, you said that they're already starting to work on the high-level study.
So they are to start on this, I believe, next week. They're going to be under contract, UC Berkeley is with the PUC this week, and the, they're supposed to, by the law, they're supposed to be finished by July 1 of this year. But I've also been told that if they need a little more time, because this is dragged on and on and on, they might be given that extension.
And so the various partners that you are talking about, you are currently trying to raise money across the board, so from people like our cities and the county and private businesses, and that timeline is pretty short, it sounds like?
Absolutely it is. That, that's an excellent comment for which it does pose the question, so about the timing. And the timing of all the expertise from around the country that we've been given, and when we go around the stakeholders here in the county, and it's a very broad, diverse group of business, education chambers, government, everyone believes that we need to get started right away. The closure in 2024 is something that, you know, we should be well on prepared and even implementing a strategy well in advance of it closing. We are also, the EVC has also applied for federal grants, one in particular from the EDA, the Economic Development Administration, which is the Department of Commerce, and looking at them also supporting this, which they've been supportive, but we'll see what happens. So we're really turning over every rock possible to try to find money for the communities. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else for questions? Red?
Mike, you said you've embarked on a nationwide RFP. Is that to find a consultant who will develop this plan?
Yes, correct.
And where are you in that timeline?
Well, so we took the better part of a year to actually go through this process, about a year and a half, actually, to do an RFP. We had 75 firms, very high-qualified firms from throughout the nation that have submitted a proposal. We then got it down to five, this committee did, and then from the five, they unanimously selected this one firm. The firm is not under contract, we continue to talk with them, they continue to help us with advice, and this is a firm also that has worked with other communities that have had nuclear power plant closures. So they have a lot of experience, they keep helping us, and they're sort of on standby until such time that we can raise the money as a community to have them do this work. Simultaneously, UC Berkeley is going to do the Phase 1, and hopefully they'll overlap. So the theory is that the strategy Phase 2 could start sometime perhaps later this year, is probably a best-case scenario.
Okay, so all you need to pull the trigger is the money.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all, very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. With that, that would conclude any public comment, I just want to scan the audience. Okay, all right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And with that, we'll start off with discussion, and I'll start at the end. Marlis, you want to start us off for discussion?
Well, I certainly appreciate and understand the need for us to pay back San Luis, and we have to appreciate the help that they gave us, so I would certainly support using the $15,000 from the Risk Management Fund to pay them back for their legal expenses. On the issue of whether or not I feel ready to commit this council to a financial decision to do another study, a strategy, a plan, I'm ambivalent about it, possibly because I am skeptical of plans that never get implemented. And so I have some reservations about it, but I'm certainly willing to listen to my other council members and hear what they think about it, if that's a worthwhile investment on our part. I'm sorry that we're the first council to go out on this, I wish I'd knew what somebody else thought about it before committing as to it, but those are my thoughts, my initial thoughts at least.
Thanks, Marlis. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, I'm not quick to spend money either, especially our money, the city's money. By history, I was part of the subcommittee for the original group that sought the $85 million settlement and had the opportunity to go to the CPUC, I think that's correct, yeah?
CPUC, yeah.
Yeah, to advocate for actually getting that settlement. Unfortunately, that didn't come to fruition sadly, or we'd be in a better spot. And so I would agree with my counterpart on council, Marlis, that that money is due and payable to San Luis Obispo, who really led the effort and provided much more resources than I think the $15,000 that we are asked to repay. And so I would support that and also support staff's recommendation that come from the reserve fund. With regard to the further study, I recall a number of which really moved me during the initial subcommittee meetings, and the number was that of those employees at Diablo Valley, 100 of them lived in Morro Bay. And that surprised me, that's a lot, if you look at that potential impact on the community. I would have thought that it was much less than that, and so I was surprised. Given that, the Monting Study, from what I understand, is a broader study that is looking at just the potential economic impact that the closure of plants in general has on communities. It doesn't have a strategy to understand the replacement of the economic loss, nor does it have an implementation component in terms of how to mitigate the losses that might be identified through that study. So, given the fact that Mike's comment about the fact that this is a loss of one major sector in our county, such as tourism. If tourism went away in this county, it would be about a billion-dollar impact. If the wine industry went away, it would be a billion-dollar impact. When Diablo goes away, it will be at least a billion-dollar impact. And the impact, given the fact that the little facts that we know, we have 100 employees or more here in Morro Bay, could be very significant to this community. And because of that fact, the tremendous magnitude of the impact on the county, I am supportive of participating in the economic study that has been identified by the EVC. Myself and Councilman Davis are the representatives to the EVC, so we do have some insights on how they work. Mike's group will be taking the lead on this, I have complete faith in what his group does, and they have produced significantly positive results for the county in the past on many initiatives that they've worked in. Secondarily, this, and I heard his words, is going to be a public and private partnership in terms of funding this. And if I know Mike, as I do, he will move significantly to obtain funds from the private sector that I believe will want to get behind this and support it. Now, there's no guarantee for that, but I do believe that that will happen. And that might minimize our potential contribution to funding this, or helping to fund this study and this implementation plan, not just a study of impact, but a mitigation implementation plan to try to figure out and actually identify action steps to correct and replace the billion-dollar loss throughout the county, of which, you know, Morro Bay may indeed face a significant hit. And I think the return on investment for spending $25,000 to $40,000 will be much greater than just that spend in terms of what we might realize as we identify the mitigation strategies. I don't believe it will be a plan that will be shelved, and that's always a concern. I absolutely agree that we do studies and they sit on the shelf and we've spent the money. I don't think the ask tonight is to actually commit to that, but to commit to the support the way I understand the staff report, realizing that the magnitude might be in the range of 25 to 40. I would be highly supportive of that. I would be highly supportive of that range of cost as to where that comes from, I would leave it to staff when and if. The full and final recommendation comes for the actual costs to inform us as to where best to get that from, and there may be other sources than our reserve fund that we're currently talking about to replace the $15 million. So I'm supportive of both sides, 15 payback, the movement forward of supporting this plan, and I'm kind of excited and happy to maybe be the first council to proactively, you know, say yes, because this is important. It's one sector lost, which is huge. And, you know, this is 2018, and we're talking about impacts in 2025, and that's just around the corner, so thank you.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I too, I too can support the $15,000 payback to San Luis Obispo, that has been, was very helpful, and so by all means, I'll be supportive of that. I really appreciate the metaphor given to us of the $1 billion across the sectors in the town and the county. So I kind of, I guess I concur with John in terms of losing that segment of the economic pie countywide, what it can bring to Morro Bay, perhaps in jobs, perhaps in the trickle-down of the people who may live here. But also, I mean, for many of us, we, when we lost our own power plant, and we've gone through that, we're not necessarily going to, I don't see necessarily a new Diablo coming online, but however, if we can, this study countywide, in consideration of all the various other pieces of the pie, I think it could be a little bit of foresight looking forward, that this is one way that we can know what could be coming, and I hate to use such indeterminate words there. But to be out front in this a little bit, especially where we are in terms of our own tax base and budget, looking out forward on this, if we could get out and know what might be coming, perhaps we could plan down the road. This $25,000 to $40,000, yes, on one hand, I see your point, Marlis, it's like, okay, another study, but however, looking at our budget outlooks, looking where we are in the last two or three years with the various financial realities we have, perhaps this might be a small, a smaller drop in the bucket that could benefit us later. So that's how I'm looking at that.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
I agree that we need to reimburse the city of SLO for the $15,000, with great gratitude for them taking the lead. And I agree with Mike that this is a critical study for the county to pursue. I am reluctant to commit city money at this time without knowing where we're going to be with our mid-year review. We do have experience, as Matt said, with the power plant shutting down in Morro Bay, and that did have a great impact on our finances, and we're still trying to recover from that. I am impressed, though, with the work that EVC has done in the past. Our airport is an example, they were behind that and that is turning, that is marching forward with great momentum to increase our economic vitality countywide. We have our own economic development strategic plan that we are trying to implement now, and we're going to have to commit city money to make that work. John is very persuasive tonight with his support for the plan, and I have to say that you have turned me from being reluctant to being supportive without making a financial commitment at this point. I would like, I would need to see what the amount of money is and compare that to where we stand with our mid-year review. But on the other hand, I don't want Morro Bay to be a free rider and not contribute to a plan that everybody else in the county is contributing to. That wouldn't sit well with me, so. So I have to say that I am generally supportive of funding our fair share of the plan, contingent upon specific financial knowledge, so.
Thanks, Red. I concur with all my colleagues on council. I would say, I consider the, this initial recommendation to appropriate the $15,000 is a formality. We went into this group, team of cities, over a year ago, so I feel that this is more of a formality and would agree and support that the $15,000 that, for our portion of the work that has been done, I would support that. The part about the future study, Red, I agree with your comments about whether or not the county would be, or parts of the county would be doing some sort of study and strategic plan, and we weren't part of that. I think we have a pretty good record as a county collaborating on regional levels, not just on the regional boards that many of us serve, but, you know, in this instant, I kind of feel like this is an all-in decision from my standpoint. I respect and always, I think we're, we always are thoughtful about the financial part of that, and I would say our staff is as well, we're all looking at that portion of it. Without going into more discussion, because most everybody has already done that, I don't think I need to go any further, other than I would support staff recommendation as it's laid out, that we allocate and appropriate the $15,000 that I feel we committed to when we first got into that, and would support staff recommendation that we would partner in the county program to do, to develop a regional economic study and strategy, understanding that we will, are looking at a range of between $25,000 and $40,000, and we will have a better idea of what that is, and we'll also have some better financial knowledge on different funding. You know, I don't think that the Risk Management Fund is the all fund for us, but, you know, we do have some adequate funds in that, in that fund to accommodate this specific need. But we do have some responsibilities for our own economic development strategy that we're doing ourselves, and we need to be mindful of that. So it is a balancing act, and this is one of those, one of those decisions. So unless there's any other discussion, I'd accept a motion to, for staff recommendation. Marlis?
No, I just wanted to say that I certainly agree that we want to partner and be an equal partner with the other cities and the county, so I really do agree with everything that has been said so far. I wish I had more information about the study itself, but I can certainly go along with my colleagues.
Yeah, okay, great. With that, I would take a motion to, for staff recommendation.
So I'd move staff recommendation to direct city manager to re, to pay $15,000 to reimburse the city of San Luis Obispo for legal costs, assumed by SLO as the lead agency for the Coalition of Cities in support of the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant Closure Settlement Agreement. And that we consider supporting financially the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant Closure Community Impact Mitigation Program, in partnership with San Luis Obispo County and the cities therein and other partners.
therein and other partners through the development of a regional economic study and strategy, the contribution of which to be determined at a later date as we gain more information from our staff, and also, well, I'll just leave it at our staff, period.
I second that.
So a motion by Mr. Heding, a second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in papers, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries, 5-0. Thanks for all the discussion and work on that. Does anybody need a short recess at this point? A short recess? A short recess, and then we'll come back in about five minutes. Thanks. All right, welcome back, everybody. Our next business item and final business item for the evening is Item C2. This is review of and direction regarding Harbor Advisory Board recommendations on fiscal year 1718 work plan objectives and consideration of establishing fee-based boat RV storage in the Triangle parking lot and licensing permitted, permitting for profit activities and businesses occurring on Title &amp; Trust properties. Eric, sorry, that was a long, long-winded title. It just took me a few minutes to get through it.
Oh, you should have seen it before we pared it down. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Irons and Council. I'm not sure, but I may have a potential funding source for your last item problem, so, but we'll see. So before us tonight again is some Harbor Advisory Board goal objective work plan items that we've queuing up and bringing forward for council direction and input on. Purpose here tonight is to give a council update on these seven items of our 30-some items on our list, obtain council concurrence that work is complete on four of those items, and obtain council input and direction on three of those other items, to see if we're going to continue carrying them forward or what we're going to do with them. From a recommendation standpoint, fairly simple, and the staff report, although I reiterated it on with some more information here, gaining staff input and direction as outlined on the goal objective work plan items. From a logistical standpoint, in the staff report, these items are listed as items one through seven. I will continue to refer to them that way. I'll try and abbreviate it. There's a lot of moving parts and a lot of items here, so I want to keep it so that they are understandable and we don't get them mixed up. Item number one is Goal 1 Objective D6 Fee-Based Boat or RV Storage in the Triangle Parking Lot. Item two is Goal 1D8 More Drive-In/Walk-In Movie Nights at the Rock. Item three is Goal 1D10 Lease Holder Incentive for Diversified More Caliber Type of Products or Services Offered. Man, that's really booming in. Item four is Goal 1D11 Additional or More Robust Grant Seeking Program Within the Department. Item five is Goal 3E1 What Rob Lively coined as the Adopt-A-Thing Opportunities. Different facilities and/or opportunities for groups to adopt different things for this, within the city as a cost-saving measure. Item six, Goal 1D2 License Agreements for Various For-Profit Events Occurring in the Title &amp; Trust Properties. And finally, Goal, item number seven is Goal 1D4 License Agreements for Various For-Profit Businesses Operating Within the Title. So again, I'll always be referring to those, usually it's Item 1, and I'll try and give them a basic name so that we keep them straight and don't get them mixed up. Alternatives, as always, council can direct us otherwise, other than as being, as is being recommended tonight. From a fiscal impact standpoint, and this is why I kind of laid out what all the different items are, because now we've got seven different potential fiscal impacts. Item one, the Boat RV Storage. If implemented as envisioned or as researched, a 50-space lot at about 75% occupancy at about $91 a month would generate about $41,000 of revenue per year with an initial expense of, on fencing and basic infrastructure of about $12,000. Item number two, the Fiscal Impact. More movie nights at the rock. Unknown fiscal impact, but likely minimal. It's really just a bring more people to town and get more people and more positive energy going is what that really would bring. Item three, the Lease Holder Incentive for Diversifying Products. Unknown, but a likely minimal positive fiscal impact. Item number four, Grant Seeking. Obviously a significant, potentially significant fiscal impact, but it widely varies year to year depending on what sort of grants we get. We do currently go after a number of grants, mainly from Department Boating and Waterways, but also from the Joint Cable Fisheries Liaison Committee, and we're pretty aggressive with those. But that can vary from year to year. Item five, the Adopt-A-Thing Initiative. Unknown, but moderate cost savings would be likely if some of those things are adopted by different groups or organizations to take on. Item number six, the License Agreements for For-Profit Activities. There'd be a modest positive fiscal impact, as you'll see, we're recommending a licensing fee for that and percent gross of sales. And item seven, Licensing for For-Profit Businesses. No real direct fiscal impact, as anticipated, probably negative, minor negative fiscal impact on staff time, just managing the program. From a background standpoint, again, these are HAB goal objective items as established by the City Council goal-setting process. Items one through five were reviewed by the HAB back in September of 2017, and items six and seven were reviewed by the HAB back in October of 2017. So again, handling on a numbers-wise basis, the four items that we consider having research done, and there's really no further action to be taken on, are these first four items that I'm looking for council concurrence on. Item number two is the Drive-In/Walk-In Movie Nights at the Rock. While they've been great events, they're organizationally quite challenging, they're very manpower-intensive, and take a lot of time to organize and pull off. So from a standpoint of friends of the Harbor Department who were really instrumental in organizing the first two we did and our own staff, Harbor Department staff, we recommend that further events be done, and these are really the Harbor Advisory Board recommendations. When I say we, we recommend further events be done on a contract basis, much like the holiday events were done this past Christmas, over the holiday season, so that's how we foresee doing in more and more robust basis. We could probably pull them off occasionally, maybe once a year, every couple of years, but doing more is asking a lot of staff to do. So we deem this item really complete. If the city wishes to pursue those things further, again, under a contract basis, that could be done under a different incentive. Item three, the Lease Holder Incentive for Certain Products. The idea behind that one was provide a lease holder incentive for certain products that we might like to see, or certain services we might like to see, or a higher caliber of products or services. And the general conclusion of the HAB and staff was, let's let the market decide really what is to be produced out there on our waterfront. There's no sense trying to socially engineer what is produced on our waterfront, let the market decide what that is. So we're really deeming that council objective complete. Item number four, More Robust Grant Seeking. Our Harbor administrative technician is now tasked with grant research, and she has been doing that. We continue to aggressively seek and obtain various grants, as I stated before, the boating and waterways grants for our launch ramp and equipment, boat demolition, derelict boat demolition, cable committee grants, those sorts of things we continue to pursue and others. And we deem this council goal objective item complete. From a HAB goal standpoint, we do consider grant seeking an ongoing mission of our department, and we'll continue to do so. And then item five, the final item that we consider done, the Adopt-A-Thing Initiative. The Harbor Advisor Board and staff identified and developed a list of potential projects and potential groups to partake in those projects. The list was forwarded to the then Deputy City Manager for possible implementation, as that position was the one that was tasked with managing that project citywide. That is on hold for now, seeing as how we don't have a Deputy City Manager, and being really implemented on a case-by-case basis as those opportunities arise, or until wrapped into another initiative of some sort to continue moving forward. So we deem that one complete from a Harbor Advisory Board standpoint. Okay, moving on to the meat and potato items. Item number one, the Boat and RV Storage in the Triangle Lot. Again, these are HAB recommendations, along with staff concurrence of these recommendations. The recommendations being that we charge a market rate for that kind of storage, the idea being we don't want to compete with the private sector, and I think we heard some comments tonight, we totally agree with that. We don't want to undercut the private sector and pull their customers away. That's not right. We recommend it be fenced to some degree for security, no additional lighting being added with the existing lighting from the power plant, and inside that lot, there's a couple of standing pole lights in there that are probably adequate. We recommend it be issued on a first-come, first-served basis, with a waiting list established if the demand exceeds the supply. Recommend it be managed by the Harbor Department, being as how it'd be boats, with potentially RVs, but I think we heard public comment mostly that they wanted to be boats, and that was the Harbor's recommendation, Advisory Board recommendation that RVs become secondary. Revenue sharing between the general and Harbor funds. I think we heard comment, both written in tonight, that while that property's not Harbor Title &amp; Trust properties, that it makes sense for the Harbor Department to manage it because its boats would dictate some sort of a revenue sharing. Harbor Advisory Board came up with an 80/20, 80% Harbor, 20% general fund. I don't think that was off of any analysis. I think that's just a number they came up with. I guess sort of see the pants, for lack of a better word. I could come up with some examples later if we get into some discussion on that, if need be. From a priority standpoint, again, the HAB recommended boats be number-one priority with RVs on a space-available basis, and then priority on any waiting list to Morro Bay residents, with Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen given top priority. And they also recommended a 5% price break to Morro Bay residents. Other suggestions that came up but did not really have any HAB discussion, therefore there's no HAB consensus or recommendation on, was things to consider were subleasing. Should folks be allowed to sublease their spaces out? From a staff standpoint, I would not recommend subleasing for a number of reasons. One, it's tough to manage. Two, it could encourage people deeming that storage as a product that they can make some profit on by getting spaces and subleasing them out and charging more. Security deposits was another item brought up to prevent that becoming a derelict boat storage area, and I think that combined with that and/or a good market rate to make sure that it's not just a cheap storage solution and is a good storage solution is one way to combat that. And then liability insurance requirement is another way to combat that that was brought So we've got, as you may have noticed, there's about five boats in that lot now that we've allowed to go in there on a trial basis to see how manageable it is and what the demand is. That was done with no advertising whatsoever. Those would just really walk in, folks. There appears to be a pretty good demand out there, and there's probably more if a little bit of advertising was done. There's fairly minimal management required. Once the place is set up and accounts are established, we've got the AR billing program to deal with it. They fit right in. It's a pretty simple thing to do on a month-to-month basis. Allowing a certain amount of use, you know, maybe a quarter of that lot or so, should not impact the regular public parking use of that lot, because there's ample space left due to the minimal demand there is currently. As a reminder, this program suggested is a temporary one until a permanent use is found for this lot. We know there's a lot of competing uses potentially for that lot, be that a boatyard, general public parking, something else, or a combination of those. And a reminder also, the city is still committed to the full build-out of Maritime Museum in that general area, so, again, this wasn't meant to be a permanent solution. This is meant to be a revenue generator on an interim basis to, again, just generate some revenues and get some use of that lot in an area that isn't being used currently. So we're seeking council implement and direction on whether or not to implement this and whether we want to carry forward or not. And there's an overhead shot of just a general idea of the amount of space it would take. What we sort of plotted out was sort of a pull-through parking situation, meaning you pull into one end of that, maybe the top end or the northern end of that colored area, and pull in, and then you have a space on either side of you, a row of spaces on either side as you move south, being as you pull in, if you're bringing a boat in, you pull in and then back your boat into a space and then pull out, and if you've got a boat in you're taking out, you come in and you back up to your trailer and then pull it out forward so that you're a continuous loop. What you don't want to create is a dead-end space or cul-de-sac that people have to pull in and deal with, so you make it a pull-through basis. So that's roughly about the area that would accommodate somewhere in the neighborhood of about 50 spaces. Okay, item number six, the License Agreement for Certain For-Profit Activities Occurring on Title &amp; Trust Properties. Some examples of these types of events would be weddings or corporate events that are put on the beach by for-profit companies that are out there, basically a business operating on city property to earn profit, and it's not an activity per se such as a festival or other public-type activity that's not out there making money just for the sake of making money. So it's our opinion, this department's mission is promote business in a safe, orderly, and professional manner in the Title &amp; Trust and to increase opportunities for small businesses, and this could be one way to increase those opportunities. And again, the examples are for-profit companies that are out there putting on events on our beaches and other areas, and parks and whatnot for profit. Some businesses, again, they're, we believe these business activities are not appropriate for the public area use permit process, which is currently the process that enables these type of events. Public area use permit is basically a fee that, really, the only thing that's charged is a fee to, administrative fee to recoup the cost of processing the fee, of processing the permit, sorry, and reserve public space if somebody's wanting, say, Title &amp; Park for a wedding, and they want to reserve the park for the wedding, it reserves the public space for them as well. But again, we don't feel it's appropriate for a public area use permit. It really ought to be by license agreement with the company that's putting on these events. Somebody that came along and just, you know, the Smith family that wanted to come along and put on their own wedding personally and reserve a park or a space on the beach, then that would certainly fall under the public area use permit, because those aren't, people aren't doing it for profit, they're just doing it for themselves. The Harbor Advisory Board recommendations were one-time periodic public nonprofit-type events such as surf contests, kite festivals, and the like, remain in the public area use permit process. Again, weddings that people put on on their own should be public area use permit process derived. Licenses should be issued on annual basis, and an RFP issued process issued if demand is significant for a given use or a given type of activity. And they let the market determine the number of license unless, again, the demand is significant. I had some comment or questions from some council members, what does significant demand entail? I don't really have a definition for that. I think it's along the lines of you'll recognize it when you see it. I wouldn't anticipate a lot of demand. There's one company out there right now called Beach Butler's that puts on these types of events, and they do them countywide. It's not just on our beaches. We don't have people knocking down our doors to put on these types of events and putting on things like this. I don't have a lot of people looking to put on beach vendor activities, but if the demand was such that it was creating issues, I think, from a trash standpoint or a space management standpoint, or conflicting with public use of the areas standpoint, I think at that point would be when we'd look at maybe limiting it or doing some kind of an RFP process to control it a little bit. And continuing, Harbor Advisory Board had sensitivity to unfair competition with established brick-and-mortar businesses, meaning- brick and mortar businesses, meaning if somebody wants to come along with a mobile kayak rental business and set up or mobile stand-up surf business out on the beach, out at the Rock, kind of unfairly competes with the brick and mortar folks. So there's sensitivity to that and make sure some sort of provision is made for that kind of competition. I think probably the way to deal with it is to put that into an RFP process so that the brick and mortar people could do it as well, could compete as well. The harbor advisory board recommended that six-pack type charter vessels, which are Coast Guard licensed rentals that are captained with six or less passengers, those are commonly called six-packs. The recommendations with those don't fall under a license agreement process but be required to operate as a sublease out of an existing lease site. The reason for that being increased liabilities for those sorts of operations, you're concentrating a number of people in an area and we didn't feel it was appropriate to just let that occur on any old public facility. And that those sorts of operations already have existing landings that are set up for doing that, and that's the most appropriate place for those to occur. And they wouldn't be operating, they wouldn't be competing necessarily with those landings since they're operating out of them versus operating sort of freelance would be sort of unfairly competing with them. The HAB's recommendation on fees was a flat licensing fee that covers an administrative cost plus 10% of gross revenues. Other fees potential based on revenue scaling or on a case-by-case basis negotiated as appropriate depending on what sort of businesses come forward to participate in this program. Harbor advisory board recommended administrative approval of these permits or these licenses and that, of course, any city business license or any other required permitting would still have to be complied with. It wouldn't be, this would be the only sort of thing if there was some other permit or permission required. So again, we're seeking council input and direction on this, on whether or not to continue pursuing it and implementing it and under what parameters. And if approved, we'll develop policy and process based on council input and direction and implement. Okay, down to number seven, the final one. Similar to the last item, license agreements for certain for-profit businesses operating on the titleless trust properties providing boater and harbor services. The harbor advisory board sort of delineated between two types of these activities occurring, one being the one that I just covered, folks coming in and providing services or rentals on the beach or wedding-type event services on the beach versus these types of businesses which are really boating and harbor-related services. These would be marine surveyors or boat bottom cleaners or boat maintenance folks, yacht brokers, those sorts of folks that are on the water, business-based on the water that aren't operating by way of any type of a lease site but are still out there operating. And again, we feel it's the department's mission to promote business in a safe, orderly and professional manner and ensure those conducting business on the bay have appropriate business or other required licensing or certification for their line of work. The HAB felt that another layer of licensing or permitting wasn't necessary for these types of businesses due to their small size and scale and a lot of them are one-person operations, but did feel that another layer of oversight was necessary to ensure that these types of folks are not only getting a business license but adhering to a higher level of standard from a best management practices standpoint and to ensure that they are licensed or certificated in their line of business, such as a marine surveyor could be, should be accredited by one of the three accrediting agencies where a business license type process wouldn't normally flag that. And again, they're following best management practices. Gave you some examples, marine purveyor, repair purveyors, bottom cleaners, marine surveyors. So from a HAB standpoint, the recommendation, again, it'd be minimally regulated, didn't think another layer was necessary. Utilize the city's existing business license approval and renewal process with an added level of review by the harbor department for the issues that I just spoke about and identified. They felt that no insurance requirements should be put on top of that, again, due to the small scale and size of most of these businesses being one-person operations. So that's sort of the gist of the harbor advisory board input on those. So again, we're seeking council input and direction on whether or not to implement this and under what parameters, and if approved, we will move forward with the city council direction. So in conclusion, items two, three, four and five, those are the ones we feel we're complete with, we don't really need any more council input other than concurrence that we're done. Seeking council authorization and direction to pursue the boat storage in the triangle parking lot, again, temporary basis, this isn't meant to be permanent use of this lot. Use and make some revenue out of it until a permanent use can be found for that lot. Seeking council authorization and direction on the license agreement process for the for-profit activities and for the for-profit businesses occurring on Tideland's Trust properties. Okay.
All right, Eric, thanks. Well, let's start off with questions. Speaker slips for this item, are there anybody for public comment? We have one? Okay, good. So, thank you Dana, thanks Terry. So, questions, start off with Marlese at the end for questions.
All right, yeah. Well, thank you Eric, and Eric was kind enough to meet with me this afternoon, so he answered most of the questions that I have, but I will just, for the sake of the public, ask a couple of them here. First of all, I know you, Mayor Irons, you mentioned that, and it's, we need to be clear that this is not included in Measure D, so this is not land that would be part of the Measure D.
Correct. Measure D is specifically, deals with state-owned tidelands subject to city lease. While this will be subject to a city lease or license agreement of sorts, it's not state-owned tidelands.
Okay. And I know there, I asked you the question about the rationale for the 80/20 split between harbor and the general fund, and you indicated in the presentation that there really wasn't a clear rationale, but could you explain why you thought that it should be divided in that way?
Yeah, so, thank you Councilwoman McPherson. I think, having spoken to you about it and a couple of the council members about today, rationale or at least some sort of reasoning has come to mind, the HAB came up with the 80/20, and other numbers have been brought up. I think I kind of likened it to looking at our state, our lease sites where the city owns the ground in trust to the state, but the city owns the dirt basically and the risk is on the leaseholder to build the improvements, manage it, sublease out and maintain, and the city gets a return on that investment. Basically, what we get as a harbor department on those lease sites is a minimum rent, which is 8% of the appraised value of the property and depending on whether a site is a percent gross generator or not, somewhere between 3% and 10% of our gross revenues on average, I don't have a number off the top, but of the total revenue generated on our waterfront, we're probably earning as a city somewhere in the neighborhood of somewhere between probably 5% and 7% of the gross revenues if you average out the 3% to 10%. So a 20% return to the general fund for owning the dirt and the harbor department managing the rest, to me seems like a reasonable compromise. There certainly can't and shouldn't be any gift of public funds in either direction if the harbor department's tasked with managing it, obviously there's, I think there'd be an expected, some sort of return on investment and not just recoup the cost of our administration cost to manage it because otherwise what's the incentive for my department to take time and manage it and just pay for that and then everything else goes somewhere else? So I think there needs to be some sort of a reasonable split there, and is 80/20 the perfect number? I don't know. Again, I don't, there can't be a gift going either direction, it needs to be fair and reasonable, is sort of my bottom line on it.
And how do you envision providing security at the location?
It would be fenced with controlled access. There's different ways, from a simple key type access. The investment is relatively low for the basic infrastructure and I think, kind of like the launch ramp pay parking, which paid for itself within the first year, I think this would pay for itself fairly quickly and we could implement some slightly higher access control in terms of with Wi-Fi and keyless entry now, you can have control and then be able to monitor the control from a computer standpoint remotely and folks can get a key card to where, rather than changing combination lock numbers or changing keys with sort of an old-fashioned analog system on a key card system, if somebody for some reason gives up their space or they're evicted, you can turn off their key automatically, instantly and keep them out, so different ways to implement. But basically be like most storage yards, just a fence, and maybe a junkyard dog we could put in there, but.
And I think you mentioned to me that you were thinking about it a month-to-month, is that correct? So you were not thinking about a longer term?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend imposing it and allowing people year or any longer leases, it'd be a month-to-month basis, just like most storage agreements, you keep paying your rent, you can stay, provided you don't do anything that goes against whatever your agreement is.
Okay.
And also the stipulation, I think, making it clear upfront for folks that this is potentially temporary. Exactly what does temporary mean? There's real no definition until the city, until we really determine what we want to do with that lot on a longer-term basis, on a grander scale. Temporary could be a year, it could be six months, could be five years.
Okay. And you indicated that you would ask for the funds to make the improvements in the next fiscal year's budget, so is that when you would start this project?
Yeah, I think we would budget for it in the next fiscal year. If we move forward with this at whatever fee we would go forward with, address it in the upcoming master fee schedule setting, so the timing is about right to kick it in for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Marlese, John.
Well, thanks to the harbor advisory board for a significant amount of work, seriously, and taking on these initiatives, and thanks to you Eric and your team for having to vet them all and whatever staff support you got from that, we really appreciate it because this is very, I know, labor-intensive and very comprehensive, so thank you. Just a couple of questions. One, do you consider there to be viewshed issues with regard to the triangle lot and potentially having boats or RVs, if that is the inclination of the council, that might block the view and also possibly not fit in the motif of the area with the surrounding environment? I mean, how's it going to look to have this boatyard where it is comparatively and how do you see it fitting environmentally? And I mean environmentally, I guess I'm not saying it real well here, but does it fit well with regard to the other uses that are in the area? I know it's not prohibited, but what's the fit like and what are the viewshed issues, if any?
Well, obviously it's industrial zoned, it was a power plant property before, used mainly for lay-down yards and staging of equipment and materials for the power plant as they went through the decades of operation. The backdrop, from a standpoint of viewshed, if you look at, think about the different areas that it's viewable from with the, we took the fence down or lowered the wall, I guess, you know, a few years ago when we got ownership of that, for mainly security reasons, knowing that people were reluctant to go back there because it was kind of a backwater and not really viewable and there's a real potential fear for bad things happening behind a wall that nobody could really see. And so from a security standpoint, I think that was the idea of the wall being lowered down. So you've got a view from the road, from an arqueberry road, and if I look at the backdrop, I've got a power plant and a hill and a wall of trees, so I don't think it differs greatly from if that lot was just a big parking lot full of cars. Okay, it's a parking lot full of cars and it's got some boats in the back, I don't see a big difference from there. From the front seat parking lot, in my opinion, the same general motif, you're looking at your backdrop as a power plant. It's not the nicest thing to look at and it's a big industrial site. A few boats in front, I don't think it's going to make a huge difference. The folks from above, back here, I don't think, with the exception of maybe the ones right out here in the corner, I don't think you can see through those trees much to it, so there's not a huge viewshed down there. One of the comments we heard, I think from Rigmar earlier, and I share that concern of mission creep and now our folks are going to start working on their boat, absolutely not. We would craft, if move forward with this, craft this, this is storage only. You know, obviously if you go in there and your trailer's got a flat tire or something, you know, the spring has rusted through in your trailer and it's broken, you're going to have to jack it up and work on it, but absolutely not, it's not meant to be a workyard and so that type of activity shouldn't be happening. If it does, then people lose their ability to stay there and we kick them out. So from your standpoint, Councilman Harding, I don't see a lot of big viewshed issues, I think it's an industrial site and storage, until we find a better use for it and screen off what's behind you, I don't think it's a big view issue.
My second question with regard to that aspect of, seems to be concentrated on this area, was with your limited staff resources, is this going to consume, you, I guess foresee this consuming a significant amount of time of harbor staff that might take them away from more important duties and responsibilities like managing the harbor per se and ensuring safety and other responsibilities and just from your operations standpoint, what do you see? I could see this potentially as maybe being a nightmarish thing that someone's always being called over because somebody stole my tire, you know, kind of a thing, so.
I would see the greater burden being an administrative one, just managing the accounts and signing people up. Once somebody's in and set up, be on a, from a billing standpoint, most of the work would be done once the account's set up and underway. I don't know what the, we, from a patrol standpoint, obviously I think even from a police standpoint, you know, there's going to be somewhat of an increased patrol requirement just in general looking through there to make sure that, you know, things are clean and organized and aren't going on, so there will be a little bit more of a burden there. I don't see it consuming us, but it will take some extra time, absolutely. Is the juice worth the squeeze, I guess, to use a term we've heard here before?
Yeah, that was my question. Is the juice worth the squeeze?
I think the juice is worth the squeeze. It's a relatively low amount of cost and development once set up, you know, you've got a flat piece of ground with a fence around it and there's not a lot of maintenance to happen there.
Okay. Just two more quick questions. One, your master fee schedule right now is $91.50 for a 9x20 space, which equates to 51 cents a square foot if you multiply that out, times the 10x30 space, that would equate to 154 bucks. How come you only want to charge 90, whatever it is, 90 bucks or $91.50 per month? It seems low.
That master fee schedule is the amount we already have on there that was, we put in for out on our yard out by the creek, which is primarily for commercial fishing folks that need space that can't get it in the existing gear storage yard, so that's why we went with that. It's not far off from and above what we found to be the general going rate for just a basic parking space at, say, Frank Smith Properties or the other ones around town. It certainly could be higher, and again, we don't want to compete unduly with the private sector. I, to be honest with you, I didn't look at our current rate and then equate it to a larger space, which these spaces would be, but you did point out correctly that a boat trailer parking space is going to be a little bigger than what our spaces are in our storage lot, our dirt storage lot that we have now.
And last question is, with regard to the other uses and other intermittent temporary organizations that might come in to do business along the waterway, are you planning on doing any new marketing to increase the amount of business that's down there or is there going to be a marketing plan for that or is it just, this is just to clarify the existing traffic that's coming through and utilizing the spaces from a business standpoint?
I think both. I think we should implement some sort of a marketing program for it. Port St. Louis, as a matter of course, every year they renew these type of licenses and they put that out publicly, that, hey, the opportunity's out, here's what we've got, here's sort of the services we're looking for, everybody come and apply, including the incumbents. So I would envision something along those lines that were annually and on the city's website and our webpage, we do advertise for it and make it more well-known rather than just kind of waiting to see who shows up.
Thanks again for all your work, appreciate it.
No offense. Matt?
Hi Eric, yeah, I've got some questions for you. First of all, this was a lot of work for the First of all, this was a lot of work for the HAB to do, but it was a lot of work for you and staff to do, so thanks a lot for doing that. Having come and watched you guys for a number of months, I can really appreciate the work that went into this. And for those Harbor Board folks watching at home, thank you very much. This is quite something to see. So one of my first questions, although I've emailed you today, is, and John touched on it, and how many lease sites or slips do we have in the bay that we administer?
We manage directly about 50 slips for the commercial fishermen only.
And does that count the floating tie-ups?
Does that count?
The boats that are tied up in the harbor? The moorings?
Yeah. Well, of the 125 moorings, the first 25 are managed by Morbay Marina, by way of a lease agreement with Morbay Marina. The next 25 are Morbay Yacht Club under a separate lease agreement, and then the remainder are all privately owned. We, as a department, own, I want to say eight moorings outright that we rent directly to boaters, and then the rest are all privately owned, but we manage a lease agreement with those as well.
Okay. I guess getting that out there and then looking at the numbers of these rental places in this boatyard, would just be putting the numbers in kind of next to each other so people can get the idea of what you administer as a department. And so with that said, with those, do you envision, and I know John just asked this, but in terms of the staffing sufficient to cover these new spaces in terms of follow-through, because I guess being on land when people become derelict, you'll have to do something with the vehicles, and that'll become more burdensome for you. What sort of thought have you put into covering that?
For the folks that go feral, I guess, or go bad, in our boating world, basically, when they get to a certain point, we turn them over to a lien agency that handles almost all of it except the auction. And I would envision, in fact, a boat on a trailer has to go through the lien process under California boating law and the boater's lien law. So it's $150 fee that we incur from the service to do that, and they run everything but the auction.
So you feel fairly confident that would be part of doing business and it wouldn't be a big, overly big burden on you?
Yes.
Got it. Also, my next question is in terms of, it was brought up earlier by a couple of folks and comment, was the look and feel of this storage yard and being consistent with the Embarcadero and with lighting. There wouldn't be, I guess, anything new to this storage yard that would make it look outlandish or anything, right? There'd be a wire fence, which we used to have on that yard before we cut the wall down. There was a fence there also. But the lighting wouldn't be so big to bother the people up slope?
Well, we didn't, the HAB didn't recommend putting in any additional lighting at this time, nor would I. I think, like I say, the ambient lighting coming from the power plant as it is today, plus I believe there's one or two other poles that we probably own now that we have that lot, there are probably PG&E poles, just standard light poles that cast enough ambient light. We wouldn't anticipate putting in any additional lighting in.
And also, perhaps this was one of the key points that all the HAB meetings I attended, why would it be, and I know when we talk about putting a boatyard there, a working boatyard, why would it be useful for people to have a boat storage unit on the Embarcadero? Was there any purpose in that? Being able to store their boats there and then bring them down the Embarcadero and launch there?
Yeah, there, well, anywhere in town, an opportunity for boaters to store their boats is going to be a valuable commodity. From the standpoint of why on the waterfront, well, one, the space is available, but two, that site represents a fairly unique opportunity, and we do have two of our boats, two boats in there on our trial basis that are sailboats with mast-up, that they want to get more active doing sort of the evening Wednesday night beer can races and that kind of stuff that you see in a lot of other harbors. And currently, off of the waterfront, you can't do a boat with a mast-up, so you've got to bring it down, mast down, and spend a couple hours setting it up and taking it back down. It gets burdensome. There's two fellows now that have boats with mast-up that are trying out how it is going down the waterfront, because you can get all the way across the waterfront without having to cross any wires or any big overhanging trees. So in that regard, it presents a new opportunity.
No, I guess that's the point I wanted you to kind of speak to. And also, people would be probably in time willing to pay a premium or somewhat of a premium for that ability, yes?
Yeah, and even some of the commercial fishing boats that trailer themselves around and have rigs set up, trolling rigs set up, it's, they, some of them will appreciate being able to leave their gear up and tow them down the waterfront like that.
Got it. And also, that's a great segue to the next question. In terms of the commercial fishermen, in terms of the pricing structure, and I think I emailed you this earlier today, and I think Marlis might have spoken to this, in terms of the hierarchy of the rate structure. And I know commercial fishermen right now get a different price break on the slips they have or the storage unit down at the pit. Would we have the same sort of pricing structure at this location?
The one thing that HAB discussed and that we brought up as staff was potential 5% Morro Bay resident price structure, which kind of mirrors what we have in our purchasing policy, where Morro Bay businesses are a 4% to 5% price break, a 5% price break compared to others. I think some of the public comment we heard tonight was if we allow commercial fishermen some sort of priority in general, that's enough of an incentive for the locals rather than giving them a monetary incentive as well. Sorry, what was the rest of your question?
I guess that's the big thing, was making sure that we take care of the commercial fishing community. And then also, the next part of that question is, how do we protect Morro Bay's boating community, fishing, recreational boating, from people who might want to swoop in, no pun intended, and get those areas before them? Would we give some sort of chronological setup period for Morro Bay residents, commercial fishing and whatnot, to be able to use that?
Yeah, so I think, and I'm going to get back to your, I'll get back to the sort of overall priority idea. The slip rates are, the slip rates we have today are basically a bare bones, if we're lucky, cost-recovery basis. They're not market by any means. They're not predicated on any set difference between a market or some other rate. They just, they are what they are. And like I say, we did a cost recovery analysis a few years ago, and they were barely a cost recovery rate and probably a little below. So they're not predicated on any particular number or rubric. Back to the hierarchy part on our prioritization on who would get spaces, I think there's, the HAB was generally in agreement that there should be a preference for Morro Bay residents, given that it's a Morro Bay lot. And then commercial fishermen, because we're working waterfront, commercial fishing town, they sit on the top of that heap. The really way to determine who's a commercial fisherman is use the same measurements we use for our slips, meaning if you're a commercial fisherman on the boat 26 feet or under, you have to have $5,000 worth of fish landing tickets per year. And if you're above 26 feet, which most trailer boats are going to be 26 and under, there's not too many that are bigger. If you're over 26, then you need 10,000 in fish tickets, and that's just to prove you're, you know, minimally a commercial fisherman. So commercial fishermen get the top priority on any waiting list or the establishment of the site. I think we would, initial setup, if we move forward, we put it out to public that, hey, we've got an opportunity available here, people coming up I. And local Morro Bay commercial fishermen get first run at it, and then local residents get a second run at it, and anybody from the outside gets the third run at it. And you do it on a hierarchical basis.
In terms of that runs, those different runs, does that include the RV portion of this deal? And I think I asked you the question earlier, would it be proper to try to stock that with boats primarily in the first three, four, five, six months? And then after that, if you don't get enough to fill in, that you then open it up to RVs?
I think so, because obviously, if, once we set it up, if we set it up within a couple of months, we're probably not going to fill it up with boats. And so at what point do we determine that we're saturated with whatever the demand is from boats? It's probably going to be, once that demand trickles off to some minimal level to where we're not getting new signups, then you can probably reasonably assure yourself that, okay, there's space left and there doesn't seem to be any boaters left. At that point, you could consider letting RVs in if that's the way you want to go with it.
You probably have to establish or approve a use permit to do something like that. It's coastal-dependent industrial is the zoning. RVs aren't coastal-dependent. But it does have a slash I for sort of intermittent-type uses that you can establish through a use permit process. So if the city was interested in going down that road, we would probably have to look at issuing ourselves a use permit.
Is that looking favorable if we did that? I'm kidding, I'm kidding. And well, also, would that, I guess that would play into our hands yearly, wouldn't it, Scott, in terms of looking at the renters each year, that then if it was an intermittent or temporary, we could, after that year, that would make it easier if we did have RVs there, we could make it easier to get them rid of, I guess?
Yeah, I think we would, it would just be predicated on the use being sort of interim anyway for the site. I don't think it would be any different. It just, it sounds, it sounds a little easier to allow it to happen. Oh, we'll just allow RVs there. Well, there's actually a process we probably have to follow, just because of the zoning makes it a little more complicated. There's a way to get there, it's just, it's not as, we just can't say, yeah, it's okay.
Well, I'm sorry to take so much of your time. Eric, I do have one more question, and Scott, you might want to weigh in, you might be weighing in on this. Also, in terms of the Maritime Museum with the overhead lines there, would this, I guess the money from this possible storage yard could be used to put those lines underground? And also, those lines prohibit the size of boats that could be stored there, yes?
Yeah, and you bring up a good point. As you know, I think Larry Newland brought up this issue, and the Harbor Advisor Board has discussed it as well. There is that overhead line, that 240 gigawatt power line running across there that...
240 KV.
What is it?
240 KV.
240 KV. I knew it was 200 and something. It's a lot of power.
Yeah.
And it's, it prevents folks with sales masts from going past it. Potentially, some of the commercial boats I spoke about, although probably not, that's, it's pretty high up. I don't think the trolling-type rigs would have a problem with it, but definitely masts up would have a problem. And the Maritime Museum would like it to see it undergrounded. They're going to have a power need over there as well, and their suggestion was, hey, we know we need power, we're going to have to pay for it to get over here with PG&E, let's combine forces and underground this at the same time and establish a, you know, deadhead our power need potentially in here, so we're ready to go when that comes. And then you can underground at the same time, and we can share costs. So that was their suggestion.
So with all of this in play right now, I'm sorry, this is another question, with the storage boatyard, with the Maritime Museum, this could be a good time to have this temporary use of the storage yard and then also get that overhead power line underground for this Maritime Museum moving forward, for that triangle lot?
Yeah, it's an opportunity, and I'll apologize in advance, I'm stealing a little bit of the mayor's thunder. An opportunity to maybe earmark some of the funds for improvements in that lot and not just, okay, Harbor Fund gets so much, General Fund gets so much. Maybe we earmark a certain amount of it for general improvements in that lot and other, you know, the boatyard project and parking, if we end up directing some sort of public parking in there and undergrounding that line and helping out the Maritime Museum. There could be a lot of things that funding could be used for.
Okay, thanks, and sorry to take so much of your time.
Red?
I'm always impressed by the amount of work that the Harbor Advisory Board does and the speed at which they do it, and in this case, the scope of items that they've covered, very impressive. The only question I have refers to the adopt-a-thing volunteers. That does not seem to be exclusive to harbor activities. That's, it's more a citywide thing, and is that not on our horizon as a future agenda discussion?
Yeah, the global policy, I believe, is in the mix for the objectives for this year, so that will be brought back for kind of a bigger discussion at the February 27th meeting and the placement therein of the 2018 calendar. I don't know precisely when it'll come back, but that would be more global than Eric's list or the HAB's list.
I believe, excuse me, Mr. Collins, I believe we have that scheduled to come back, either the first or second meeting in March?
There you go.
For review and adoption of the memorial thing and the adopt-a-thing policies.
So that's on the plate, and will be done in March.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
I think most of the questions have been asked, but, no, no, that's okay. I think there's more discussion at this point. But if I go through, let me just review what we've had. So items two through five, we've kind of checked that. The RV boat item, and then the six and seven with the license agreements. So you feel the license agreements based on harbor recommendation and comments on that, whatever that would look like will come back to us? And if we, you know, there are some parameters there, we need to craft what those policies look like and kind of go through that, and we would approve and adopt that policy.
Correct. I would envision bringing some sort of a policy document forward with whatever direction is.
Harbor Advisory Board first and then through us? Would you kind of draft it and kind of vet it through them or just go?
I don't know that needs to go through the HAB again. I think we've gotten the HAB input we need.
Okay. Okay, all right. And then I think I'm just going to forego any of my thoughts, because I think it'll come out more organically once we get into the discussion. So Terry, public comment, come on up. Thanks for waiting.
Did I have to add?
Well, everybody gets their turn.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, AGP, we need a little overhead slide assistance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Terry Simons, a local Morro Bay resident and a longtime advocate of the Maritime Center. In fact, I was going back trying to find some of the exhibits that I have here, and I realized that it's September of 2016 when I last spoke to you on this very issue. And I came basically to encourage you to not spend $50,000 on a study about the triangle lot, or studies of the triangle lot, and just get out there and do something and see what happens. I spent about eight or nine months working with Eric. And I have to tell you, and in response to Red's comments about the impressive nature of the Harbor Advisory Board, having worked with Eric, I can tell you why the Advisory Board does such an amazing job. They are well-led, well-directed, and this man is a veritable machine when it comes to digesting information. I don't know the statistics, but I suspect he probably generates more grant funds than any other part of the city. And maybe you ought to loan your grant writer to Public Works for a while to see if they can help with the wastewater treatment plant grant funding. In any case, I just, I want to give a hearty thank you for keeping this idea of a maritime facility, albeit a humble start with just a boat storage yard. You never saw the preparations that I personally did. I thought it's on the Maritime Center and a boatyard and a storage yard because it not yet tabled at the Harbor Advisory Commission level and then routed into a rather comprehensive RFP, which I didn't participate in at the time, I had other demands on my time. But I will say that, I want to show you, and then I'll discuss briefly if you can see. If you look at this drawing, it's an aerial photograph. The triangle lot is barely obvious, or maybe, I hope it is. The slashed area up to the right is, I go them to the yellow barrier on Eric's exhibit. The area that is slashed the other way, heavily slashed the other way, is my expectation based on what I, since I had no plan for what I envisioned or computed might be needed for access to that lot. In Eric's description, it sounds like he's going to drive out the outside of the fenced area, then come down the center of the fenced area. So perhaps what I'm envisioning for access will be slightly narrow, but you'll still have to make a loop around. If you look at the left side of the triangle, you'll see where you can find spaces and a complete loop with an access point out onto the Embarcadero. That was the concept that I developed for the boat storage component of the comprehensive overall program that we were asked to work. overall program that we were asked to work on, and I worked on for quite a while to turn. And I have a very good understanding of the marketability of these spaces, and I can tell you that the Red's description of what he's proposing is probably significantly under-market, because location, 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 it's been a lifetime real estate, real estate development. This is a prime location. In fact, one of the things that concerns me is exactly what's been alluded to. The transportation, when we looked at it, since we wouldn't be handicapped quite the way the city is, we looked at the transportation costs alone, and cost of fuel to bring a fishing boat from the San Joaquin Valley to the coast and then take it home, and if you did that a couple of times a month, you could have a significant advantage. You could pay up to, we calculated about $120 to $150 a month for a boat storage...
Terry, yeah, I know, I, we went over a little bit, because it took so time to get your thing presented, but I just have to remind you, yeah.
You're headed down the right road. I gave Dana, unfortunately, I emailed to you.
I apologize, yeah.
And I didn't get forwarded to the rest of you, a fairly comprehensive review of points of Eric's presentation, and I hope you get a chance through Dana to have those forwarded to you. It's a great plan, and going forward, I just had some ideas about it, and I hope you get a chance to look at them. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else for public comment? Don, how about you? No? Okay, all right, we'll close public comment, come back, get into discussion. Since Eric's kind of stole my thunder, I'll just get into, maybe I'll start off on some of the discussion, and just lead off that way. I guess, first of all, as everybody has commented about the Harbor Advisory Board, and you, Eric, and all your staff working hard to get all these done, thank you. I guess what I would envision through this process is not necessarily approving something tonight on any aspect of a boat or RV, but perhaps giving some guidance and then come back with some more details. That's kind of what I envision, because I think there's a little bit more details to be worked out, and Scott alluded to some, well, if it was RVs, we'd have to go through a CUP. Interestingly, I would expect that we'd have to do the same thing regardless, whatever, you know, there's going to be a different use down there, so not to get into that, but I would expect that we'd have, we'd have to kind of refine some things and make sure that, how that thing's all laid out. You know, we've got an area that's highlighted there, not a lot of detail. I imagine, you know, I guess what I would envision seeing is a little bit more detail on what we would expect, and I would, my initial comments would be, I'd be more in favor for, to be just designated for boats, for maritime use, and not RVs at this point. And, you know what, and after, you know, a year's time or something, if there's just not the type of activity, we can revisit that. That's my initial thought and comment, and be glad to hear what everybody else has to say. Interesting concept, though, if we, if we go with the recommendations that we want to prioritize it for commercial fishermen, and then local residents for fishing boats at that point, or boats, or sailboats, whatever that may be, and then maybe non-residents, to Terry's point, you know, people from the valley are coming over, maybe that would, if we fill it up and we don't get any more takers, that would take up the remainder, but maintain it into a boating-type of storage facility over RV. Those are my comments there. I'd also like to understand, and one of the reasons I'd like to not continue this, but for the, give direction for this to come back with more detail, is the 80/20 ratio. You know, I know it was a start, but maybe we could have a little bit more information to determine what that ratio would look like. And to your earlier comments in our conversation, Eric, I would encourage council to view this as a standalone project, and that the funds to maintain it would go to the Harbor Department, and the funds over and above that would go into a triangle parking lot fund. Matt brought up a great point about the power lines, you know, basically creating a silo of fund for that parking lot, and improvements, maintenance responsibilities could be taken out of that fund. Certainly, at any point when it's developed, I don't think it necessarily would preclude council to utilize those funds in a general fund capacity, but basically concentrate it and designate it for the triangle parking lot as that particular fund. Those were, those were the majority of my comments. I think the part about just coming back with the details of the security, the lighting, and things like that, how it's screened, you know, is it just chain link fence, does it, is it screened with a chain link fence and some fabric on it to kind of provide more screen, visible screening? Does it need to be eight feet or 10 feet, depending on the boat? I don't, you know, just different things like that. And then the other, the other thing is to explore, consider cleaning up the area around the public bathroom and those trashcans, and maybe relocating them to the corner part of that lot, and any other areas we could move from that area. I understand, Eric, we had a conversation about the oil storage area, it's on a slab, that'd be quite expensive to move, but I think it'd be, it'd be great to explore what we can do to kind of start shuttering that storage area and tucking it a little bit farther away, as we see that parking lot is quite a bit more visible. Those are my comments. Marlis?
I can support your comments, Jamie. I might also add that I would like to perhaps look at increasing the rent or the lease price on this. It made more sense to me, what John suggested, which is that, it should be a square foot rate, and it should be, I think, considerably more than what they can get elsewhere, and I do think there's a demand for it. So I would add that. Otherwise, I supported Eric's recommendations on the other items. I think this was the one that had the most discussion and the most probability to come back, but I really did support his conclusions on the other ones and recommendations.
I as well, thank you. John?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I agree with your points. Marlis, I agree with your points. My comments are consistent and basically limited to boats only, at least initially. The 80/20 ratio, I think, needs to be examined. I think the revenue opportunity is to allow for infrastructure improvement on that lot. So I totally agree with what the mayor, when you stole his thunder, I agree with both Thunderbolts, as they were so elaborated on. And I think that's the way we should, in my opinion, try to structure that to maximize the opportunities to improve that lot. And then concur with the security, lighting comments, coming back, talking about that. I support not subleasing. I think that creates a capitalistic, not that I'm against capitalism, but opportunity to exploit the proliferation of a single owner trying to sublease multiple units for their own opportunity, so I would not support subleasing. I also believe, my example about square footage costs, I believe we're undercharging, and the fee structure should be examined more closely to maximize the revenue return that the city could get to do those improvements that I spoke about. And then lastly, I agree with Marlis on supporting staff's recommendation on the other items that were all-inclusive in that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Matt?
I am also, in concurrence with items six and seven, to go forward with those. I like Jamie's idea of saying only boats, perhaps for this first year, no RVs, and just keep it a boat-only storage. I think with that, then I think we could make it a very easy segue to what Marlis and John are saying in terms of charging a higher premium, or at least you could either think about it, you, Eric, at the department, or throw it back to HAB, and say, hey, what could we get, what would you think in terms of a higher rate structure just for boats on this part of the embargo dero? So I would definitely, I would be in concurrence with those two parts, and everything you ask for else in here, I am in agreement with.
Thanks, Red.
I will ditto everything that the council members have said, and I support staff recommendations on all of the items. I do want to reinforce the mayor's concern about trash and storage area, that is not the highest and best use of waterfront property, and I would like to explore alternatives to having them placed where they are.
So it looks as though we've got concurrence on all the items that came before us, including the RV concept, understanding that, based on the conversations, and I know you've been diligent about all the notes, that this will come back to us with some more detail.
Yeah, absolutely, which is great. I mean, I, in one sense, I didn't want to get too far down the road, and I could have done umpteen more amount of analysis and work on this, and then find out, oh, we don't want to go there, so I didn't want to go too far down the road on this, too, so.
No, you're good. Yeah, okay. So unless there are any other comments, we could go with staff recommendation on all items listed, items one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, that were specific to the staff report and the goals that were discussed, understanding that items six and seven and item one will come back to council for policy review and discussion.
And the focus on the boatyard, not RVs.
And with the focus on boat storage, not RV, I think we had consensus on all that. And I didn't necessarily roll in all the details that were discussed, you know, basically I'm...
I don't necessarily think you need a formal motion of that consensus.
All right, anything else? Then, no necessary, no motion necessary at this, we'll see both, three items come back to us, and the others, we're good with.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Good, thanks. Thanks, Eric, and thanks Harbor Advisory Board for all their work. And with that, that concludes item C2, and we're going on to council declaration of future agenda items, and I think Red and I both might have had that discussion, but Red, you want to start off on the CCA thing?
Yes. City of San Luis Obispo has invited us to partner in developing, or in exploring, Community Choice Energy Program. I would like for us to discuss that as a future agenda item, and I intended to bring that up as a city goal on February 2nd, and I forgot.
So I think that was on, that was, we both, I think that was a discussion as well, so I think, Scott, is that something we can just bring back on the 27th, under the goals discussion? And that could just be one more item on there that was to be looked at and considered for goals?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. There isn't a whole lot of work to be done on it right now, and I talked to the city manager of SLOW, and they're hiring, or just in the process of hiring, a new sustainability coordinator who's coming on board in March, is exceptional, and this would be one of their main tasks, and so we could really, truly just kind of be a free rider. They're looking to see who's interested in the cities within the county. The county has declined to pursue it at this time, but a lot of other cities may be interested. So in essence, it wouldn't be a whole lot of work for staff to do in the short run. So we can put it in the mix of things for you to consider to accomplish in 2018, primarily it's just tagging along for the feasibility study.
Okay.
Just to stay with our typical program, I suggested that you get one more person to say.
Yeah, do we want to head nod?
Yeah, so it looks like, so we've got some concurrence? Yeah, thanks for that.
It's on my list.
Thank you. And just, just to be clear, I mean, the CCA was an adopted goal, and we did take a pause because the county was taking a lead on a study on that, and they weren't moving forward on that, so it's appropriate and good to revisit that, so thanks for doing that. And then I just, I had one item as well, and I just wanted to, it's actually, and it was prompted during the discussion with our Harbor Advisory Board staff report on review of our work plans, and we, and one of the items on our work plans was a lease, not the lease management policy, but a policy that would evaluate inspections on our, on our lease sites on a three-year rolling basis. And that was articulated as one of the goals for our work plans, and I just wanted to, through this, I just wanted to make sure that we could have that discussion on the 27th, as making sure that, even though it's on the work plan, I just wanted to ensure that it was included in our discussion on the 27th, that we can see that as a priority goal to get completed this year. And that was, you know, one other thing, both prompted by this staff report and the goals discussion, that I just wanted to revisit. There again, I guess that would take concurrence or head nods from two others or more from council, and so just would be looking for that.
I'm nodding and saying, could it also be tied with the agenda item that I think we agreed to, that I brought up, I think it was last meeting, about the, the issue of, it's leaving me now, the criteria for leaseholders and, you know, financial acumen and all of that, is that?
I think, I think it doesn't quite tie with that.
Okay, and I'll support that thing.
Okay, all right, good. And then, anything else? None? With that, our declaration of future agenda items is complete. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February 27th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, and we can call meeting adjourned. Thank you, good night.